Sounds like we've gone hot.
You're good.
We're good. We'll go ahead and call this meeting of May 5th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to order, and we will begin with the pledge and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, one law, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Lord Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day in the beautiful city that is Lake City. And Lord, please grant this board the wisdom that we need to guide our city forward. And please, Lord, grant the safety to our children, vets, and first responders as they move throughout the world. In your name I pray. Amen. All right. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jernigan.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
City Manager Rosenthal.
Here.
City Attorney Martin.
Present.
Chief Butler.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since 1968. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitutes such boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There is only one approved manner of addressing the city council, and that is to be recognized and then to speak from the podium. As a reminder, persons are not to openly carry a handgun, or carry a concealed weapon, or firearm while the governing body is meeting. Failure to abide by the rules of decorum will result in removal of the meeting. We do have a packed house tonight, so a lot of new faces to the city council meeting. So please do not yell from the audience and address only the city council if you come to the podium, okay? All right. So with the, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, but what I would ask is that we group all of the quasi judicial together and move item number 20 to after 16. That's okay whenever whoever makes their motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the agenda with that adjustment.
No motion?
Second.
And a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign? All right. Thank you, guys. We'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing. So tonight we have Mr. Dakota, who will conduct the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Dakota Braun. I'm the grant specialist for the city. This hearing is a requirement to apply for this year's Community Development Block Grant administered by the Florida Department of Commerce. The goal for today's hearing is to give our community the opportunity to review the proposed application and provide feedback. I'll go over the proposal and give the council and the audience a chance to discuss. So the city is preparing to apply for $1.1 million in CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization Funds to repave .6 miles of Martin Luther King Jr. Street and replace approximately 1,400 linear feet of sidewalk from Texas Avenue to Broadway Avenue in Lake City, Florida. Budget for this project is engineering, including design, construction oversight, and inspection of 234,000. Road construction of 801,000 and sidewalks for 135,000. Martin Luther King Jr. Street is a residential two-lane corridor that serves as a primary access route for the immediate residents and those in the surrounding neighborhoods, facilitating daily commutes, emergency services, and local commerce. The proposed improvements will directly address critical infrastructure needs, beautify the surroundings, and enhance the quality of life for the residents in the area. Any feedback from the councils appreciated. I can try to answer any questions you may have about the application. Then we can hear feedback from citizens in the audience. And finally, we'll need a motion approving the submission of the application.
Thank you, Dakota. So if I understand correctly, we'll open it up to any questions from the council.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Dakota? All right, thank you. I didn't see anybody sign up for any item to ask questions for this, but I will open it up now just to take visual hands on this item. Seeing none, thank you. You said that we now need to vote to move forward with this?
Sir.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, move that we move forward with applying for the grant.
I second it.
No motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion by the council? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. All right, thank you. We will get now into our proclamations. Give me just a moment so I can tuck this public participation note. Away appropriately. There we go. All right. We will begin with our first proclamation, which is Drinking Water Week. Bear with us, we have three of these tonight. Proclamation for Drinking Water Week, May 4th through the 10th of 2025. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens and joy. And whereas tap water deserves public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved in their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I, Noah Walker, Mayor of the City of Lake City, Florida, do hereby proclaim, May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Lake City. And I'll add that we have an award-winning water team, and if you guys will join me up front, we'll get a photo with the proclamation. All right. Second one is Municipal Clerks Week. So our second proclamation tonight is Municipal Clerks Week. And it is as follows. Municipal Clerks Week, May 4th through the 10th, 2025. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of this office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Noah Walker, Mayor of the City of Lake City, Florida, do hereby recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Audrey Sykes, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Please come forward, Michelle. One last proclamation on our marathon of proclamations, National Police Week, a very important one, which begins next week. Proclamation for National Police Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2025. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as the Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement agency of the City of Lake City play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Lake City. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against the deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the City of Lake City unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Noah Walker, Mayor of the City of Lake City, call upon all citizens of the City of Lake City and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past, present, and future, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the City of Lake City to observe Thursday, May 15th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Now let's see if I have the voice left for the rest of the meeting. Thank you, guys, for bearing with us through those. And now we will open up public participation. I didn't have anybody who signed up for general public participation. So we will move on from there, as long as nobody's coming late. Seeing none, we'll go on to approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion by the board? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter.
Yay.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mayor Walker.
Yes. All right. Now we move on to item number 11, which is our open public hearing on park hours. City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2305. Mr. Martin, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, you have before you ordinance number 2025-2305. An ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending Chapter 86, Article 1, Section 86-2 of the City of Lake City Code of Ordinances concerning Park Hours, providing definitions, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2025-2305. It's read on the second hearing by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We will now open public comment. I have two members of the audience who have signed up for public comment on this item. And we'll start with you, Mr. Hudson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Each of you asked questions about this ordinance. All of your questions were about times and dates that would be posted for opening and closing at Camel Park at Lake Montgomery, which this ordinance pertains to, and you received no solid answer. This ordinance does not state times of dates, only 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes after sunset. Once again, this would be a hard task because the rising and setting of the sun changes daily, along with the two time changes per year. The reason that the fencing and gating were put in place were for the safety and security of the visitors and the private landowners. Plus, there is no lighting on the fishing pier or in the gated part of the park. My home is the closest to the pier, and within 25 minutes after official sundown, I cannot see the pier, and it is already dark. This ordinance has not changed in its wording since you last voted. And another vote yes will still not give us any indication of what the opening and closing times will be. A vote no will keep the current ordinance in place, and in 26 days, the times will change to 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, opening and closing for three months. This will give all parties time to sit down and hash out an ordinance that will add more months to the longer open times and state the exact times and dates so the public can see and plan around, and then brought before council. This is a unique park in this city because it does have the timed gates. And I will state again, this has saved this park and will help protect the lake for the future. But no matter what the decided times are, there's a glitch on the boat ramp gate that needs to be fixed as it has a mind of its own and opens and closes after the posted hours, which I have witnessed four times in the last five days. Plus, the old closed at sundown signs are still up and causing confusion. I would like to say something for the benefit of all here tonight, the social media and the Lake City Reporter. Over three years ago, I embedded myself into this project, attending many planning meetings because I have a history with the lake and lived on it for over 35 minutes, 35 years, and when the previous pier was there. I supported the fencing and gating after it was determined that there would be no lights on the pier, but I had no vote. I supported having times for the park because former council determined there would be timed gates, but I had no vote, as I have no vote tonight. The only things I have been outspoken about is the safety and security of the visitors and the property owners and the preservation of the lake. I care enough about the success of the park for all to enjoy that I have been going to the park regularly since the time change, meeting, greeting, and cautioning the folks on the pier that may be going out on a boat that the gates will close at the current time and assisting them if they get locked in. I caution everyone that this project would be a challenge, and I hope you make the correct vote tonight to make a success. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Up next, we have Mr. Todd Sampson.
Mr. Mayor, council, I wanted to speak on this item for a couple reasons. One, it goes back to an item we're going to have a little bit later, but we're hitting a hammer when we only need a pin. And what do I mean by that? You're going through an ordinance change, two readings, and voting for an ordinance. Not necessary. Right now, the ordinance in item F reads, which will soon be item G, that this board by resolution can change the time at any time. There's no need for an ordinance. Why are we wasting our time? Why are we wasting taxpayers' money with an attorney we don't need to engage when we could have our clerk's office write an ordinance? I mean, a resolution. As a matter of fact, tonight, you could make a motion, have your city clerk give it a resolution, and you could change the times to whatever you want them to be, and then we're done, and the times are changed, effective tomorrow, instead of going through the process y'all have gone through. Campbell Park, Lake Montgomery, the time change, y'all spoke about having two multiple time change last meeting. But yet, I haven't seen any plan for in this. If you read the ordinance, what you're saying is it opens 30 minutes before sunset, or sun rising closes 30 minutes after sunset. Well, that's great, but you have a timed locking gate. Are we changing that daily? Because sunset's different today than it was yesterday, and will be tomorrow. That's unreasonable. I think that the conversation you had about the times made sense, but that's not even what the ordinance addresses. You're going to have to come back with a resolution to change the ordinance anyway. So tonight, what you should do is make a motion with a resolution to put the times for that in there. In addition, I'd ask that you go ahead and officially change the time on Young's Park. Last meeting, y'all were here. I was watching you online. I went to the parks. They were dark. Campbell Park had no activity because the gate was locked, but it was very dark. I drove then over to Young's Park, and there was about 15 young people playing basketball, and they had the nice tennis lights lit up, and they had their car lights on them because there's no lights on the basketball court. Now, the chief said that starting today, that it's going back to 10 o'clock. I appreciate that. But your ordinance says it closes 30 minutes after sundown. You got lights on the tennis court till 10. Now you're going to have lights on the basketball court till 10, but the law says it closes 30 minutes after sundown. Again, you could fix that by resolution tonight. Just assign it a number, have him document it after the fact. You could do that. It's all possible. Going on from Young's Park, we definitely need that time change. I appreciate that because as the chief said last time, we need things for young people to do, and if they have lights on the court, it's a lot safer to play. Third, Lake Isabella Park, we never talk about it here. If you look at the aerial, you'll see that there's a pier at Lake Isabella Park that goes in. Why is that pier not repaired, and why are the hours there not set up for people to fish there as well? If we're concerned about it, and we want more things for young people to do, let's expand the options. There's people that can walk there that can't walk to the other park. That's in District 10. This one's in a different district. Maybe that's why discrepancy.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. I'll go ahead and close public comment. Those were the only two that we had signed up for that. We will now move into council comment. Who would like to start?
Mr. Mayor, I tend to agree with the two gentlemen that spoke. As far as this particular park being the only park we have that has set times at the gates, open and close, it doesn't really make any sense to me that the ordinance has vague times. So in this particular instance, whether it be like we discussed last week, last week, or last meeting, four times or two times a year, two times seems to make more sense to me upon reflection. I believe that the ordinance should read specific times, those being the times that the gate is set. So I don't know if we need to go back and rewrite it, how we need to do that, but I think that the ordinance should reflect specific times.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Martin, would you like to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So if the council desires that we take a different approach to the hours on parks, the action would be tonight to vote against the ordinance as it stands right now on second reading, provide some direction to the city attorney, to the city manager, to the police chief who's been involved in this drafting on what the desires of council would be, and then we would start back over with another ordinance, if that be the route that council wants to go.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it true what the gentleman said about Audrey being able to write a resolution, and we don't have to go through all this with the voting and back and forth?
So.
If something as simple as that, let's go ahead and do that so we can move on to something else.
So the council could draft this ordinance in a way that allowed the council to set hours by resolution rather than by ordinance. You could do that. I would recommend against taking that action tonight and then on the back end, assigning it a number and me drafting a resolution to match the motion that's kind of antithetical to what a resolution is, which is a well-thought-out document with a title that lays out, you know, what the action of council is going to be. So if the council wants to take that approach, I would say that we would need to return with a resolution that would still have the hours in it. It would just require one vote of council rather than two, and there still may be some cleanup that needs to be done in the existing ordinance because it would still stand as to hours on certain parks. And if you just wanted to defer everything to a resolution system, then we would still need to clean up the ordinance with an amendment itself to the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Did that answer the question? I want to make sure.
In a long, roundabout way, yeah, but if it's something as simple as her writing a resolution with the time on it, get the signs put out there, can we just do that and it have the same effect as it would if it come across the diocese and we keep voting on this?
So you can do it by resolution. My recommendation is that you not do it tonight, and typically, the clerk does not draft the resolutions. The city attorney's office does.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Young.
Okay, and if that's what Mr. Attorney Martin would recommend, then that's good. But as I speak the same as I did at the last meeting, there need to be a specific time, and it needs to model the other parks.
Mr. Jernigan?
No, I don't have anything, but if I may, this is in District 13? 13? Whatever you see fit that we should do and taking in consideration of the people who, or the constituents that live in that district, I think that we should definitely look into that because obviously, there's a glitch somewhere that we are missing. And of course, they live there daily, nightly, so whatever they want to do, let's try to get it done, if you don't mind. I'm all in favor of that.
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to vote, or I guess, Mr. Martin, do we need to vote this down or let it die?
What I'm hearing is that it sounds like there are a number of members of council that are not in favor of the change being made. Not only not in favor of the change being made by this ordinance, but also very much, it sounds like possibly not in favor of setting park hours by ordinance at all. And so if that being the case, I think that you may consider voting this down tonight. Let's return with an ordinance that does away with setting hours by ordinance and just allows them to be set by resolution. and just allows them to be set by resolution moving forward, and in the meantime, we need to get, uh, some feedback on what those hours need to be for that resolution, because we still need to return with something that would set park hours in some form or fashion.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like, uh, to, uh, to vote this down, and, uh, direct staff to come up with recommendations on specific times, uh, and if we could, have that resolution brought back at the same time the adjusted ordinance is brought back, so those things can be done at the same time, I think that would be...
So, so you're moving to defeat this, this item?
Haven't yet.
Mr. Mayor, so, uh, procedurally, the motion would be to, uh, to adopt, and then you would vote against adoption for it to fail.
Okay. All right.
Gotcha.
Mayor, if we can, can we go ahead and vote for the time and all of that, so when we come back?
No. Um, let's, well, let's have the adopt, let's, let's get the motion to adopt it. So we have a half motion on the floor, what do, does he need to withdraw that?
I didn't make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two-three-zero-five.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, for further discussion from the council, um, it would be a no to, to vote this down so that we could come back with something else. That's my comment. I'm not telling you how to vote, but, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Nay.
Ms. Young?
No.
Mr. Jernigan?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mayor Walker?
No. I see, I see that you're, I see that you have comment in the back, but you've already, we've already closed public comment on that item. I'm not, we're not doing any, any interruptions, we got a lot going on tonight, okay? Mr. Sampson, that's enough, thank you. All right. So we've moved, uh, down from that, does anybody, would somebody like to direct, uh, I think that from all that discussion we had, direction for you guys to come up with a new ordinance or, or so, that we can change the park hours by resolution, uh, and to go ahead and, in my mind, set these park hours, uh, as quickly as possible to seven AM to eight PM. Did, did I hear that anybody, is that correct from the council? Do we have consensus on that? So they'll bring us back, and they'll bring us back an ordinance for our next meeting, where that's the case. Tom, good?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, at the next meeting, I will bring an ordinance that, that guts the, the current ordinance of any mention of, of park hours, and just defers to council to set park hours by resolution, and I will bring a resolution that sets park hours uniformly citywide for city parks from seven AM to eight PM. Am I understanding that that's the end goal we're, we're aiming for?
Sounds correct to me.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about changing all the park hours with a single resolution. This park is the one we're specifically talking about right now, and this park is the one that ha, that, that, it has, uh, gates that automatically open and close at a time we tell it to, so it has to be very specific. I'm not necessarily arguing at the moment that half an hour before or after sunrise or sunset is relevant to the rest of the parks, unless there's a law, I'm not sure of, that requires all parks to have the same time.
Does not. I, uh, so, uh, everything else, we're just speaking about Campbell Park, Lake Montgomery Park right now, and those would be set by resolution, seven AM to eight PM, uh, everything else would be thirty minutes before to thirty minutes after.
And we would need to, we would need to have the resolution reflect the intended times for daylight savings and standard time, uh, so we have to adjust those accordingly. And I, I would also like to direct staff in a, in a slightly vaguer sense to look into whether or not we need to change or alter any of the parks' times, like Young's Park, for instance, lighting and all that sort of stuff. Let's, let's take a look at if that's something that seems feasible or appropriate as well.
I think we're all in consensus with that. Ms. Young?
Yes, and that's what I was, um, just about to say, that, as I'm hearing, and, and it makes sense that all the parks are not gonna be the same when it comes to the time, because we're definitely not gonna stop the, um, basketball courts at eight o'clock.
No. That's correct.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's the consensus, so not to, not to have a uniform across-the-board time, uh, for all of them, but for this one, we will set that, right?
So if, if the council goes in the direction it's speaking now, you will have uniform open and closing times for all parks except Campbell Park, Lake Montgomery, because all the rest of the parks will be thirty minutes before sun, as it stands. If I don't bring anything back to change it, that's the way it would be under the ordinance.
That's, Chief. Chief, would you like to speak to that real fast? Because if Camp, if, uh, Young's Park is gonna have lights on till ten, then...
Like the councilwoman said, the tennis courts and the basketball courts at Young's Park are open till ten o'clock at night. Uh, I'd be against closing them any earlier, because the, the, uh, tennis players and also a lot of the youth do use that part of the park at night, and closing at eight o'clock is much too early, it's still full sunrise, and it's lighted, so nighttime really doesn't come into play.
Okay, so we would memorialize that in the resolution along with Campbell Park, Lake Montgomery Park, just to be clear, because otherwise, I don't know that there's anything in writing saying that separate set of hours for that park.
I, my understanding was there was some agreement with the Tennis Association a long time ago, to leave it lit, but that was...
Let's memorialize it. Let's, let's make it concrete.
Let's get it...
But I, I prefer for enforcement purposes, uh, that we do carve out the basketball and the tennis courts at Young's Park to leave them open while the lights are on.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay. Any further questions on this item? All right, moving on to item number twelve, uh, which is, yes, ma'am.
It did say that the lights were gonna be turned on on the basketball courts at...
Yeah, till ten, till ten PM.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, moving on to item number twelve, City Council Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, pertaining to the Police Officers Pension Plan Board of Trustees, amending Chapter Seventy, Article Four of the City of Lake City, Florida Code of Ordinances entitled Police Officers' Pension Plan and Trust Fund, amending Section Seventy Dash Ninety-three to change the terms of trustees of the Pension Plan Board of Trustees, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment on this item, so we'll move straight into council comment or questions.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Two Three Zero Six.
On final reading. We've got a motion and a second to adopt City Council Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Six on final reading. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item number thirteen, City Council Number, Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight. Mr. Martin, will you please read that by title?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight, an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, amending the text of the City of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application LDR Twenty-Five Dash Zero-One by the City Council, providing for amending section four dot twelve dot two, entitled permitted principal uses and structures, uh, to permit churches and other houses of worship as a permitted principal use and structure within the CG or commercial general zoning district, providing for amending section four dot twelve dot five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a permitted, as a use permitted by special exception within the CG or commercial general zoning district, providing for amending section four dot thirteen dot five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a use permitted by special exception within the CI, a commercial intensive zoning district, providing for amending section four dot fourteen dot five, entitled special exceptions by deleting churches and other houses of worship as a use permitted by special exception within the C, CBD or commercial central business zoning district, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Eight as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Uh, we didn't have any public, uh, comment signed up for this one, so we will move straight into council comment or questions. Does anybody have anything?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Two Three Zero Eight.
We have a, a motion and a second, thank you, guys. Uh, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item number fourteen, this is now, we're now moving into, uh, our open quasi-judicial hearings, and this is City Council Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Seven. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Martin.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. Tonight, we have, uh, four matters that must be considered and voted on by the council in a quasi-judicial manner. Uh, those items are, uh, in the order they'll be taken up, upon final reading, ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Seven, which is an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank. Upon final reading, ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Nine, an ordinance amending the future land use plan map pursuant to an application submitted by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering, his agent for Odom Moses and Co., Odom Moses and Company LLP. Uh, upon final reading, the companion rezoning for that same parcel, uh, ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Ten, also submitted by Mr. Jones, uh, on behalf of Odom Moses and Company. And then finally, uh, the fourth item, uh, upon, uh, first reading, ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Eleven, uh, which is an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by Real Terrace LLC, a Florida limited liability company. Uh, the, the purpose of the procedures we're gonna follow tonight is to ensure that the applicant, uh, provides a complete presentation of their request to the council, prior to any testimony being provided by staff, so the applicant receives a full and fair hearing on their application, and any decision made by the council is based on evidence presented. Public testimony will be taken under oath, and everyone testifying will be subject to cross-examination. All documents and exhibits, uh, shall be entered into, uh, the record as evidence if they are to be considered by the council in making its determination. The giving of opinion testimony is limited to experts, and closing arguments is limited to evidence of record. To accomplish this, the city, the applicant, the council, and other parties will be recognized in the following order. Uh, first, the count, or the city will provide a, uh, summary or overview of the application, and also present, uh, its case, then the applicant will present, then we'll hear from any party intervenors, uh, followed by participants in opposition to or support of the application, and then representatives of groups of six or more people, uh, either for or against the application. Will then proceed to cross-examination, uh, then, uh, after that, uh, if the mayor deems it necessary, uh, to ensure fairness and due process, the mayor may choose to allow participants to respond to any testimony provided by others during the hearing. Uh, then at that time, the council members through the mayor may ask any questions of, uh, staff, the applicant, and other participants. Following that, uh, the applicant, followed by city staff, may make any final arguments related solely to the evidence of record. I will advise the council as to applicable law and factual findings that must be made to approve or deny the application. Once so advised, the council can deliberate and then vote to approve, uh, and depending on the circumstances, approve with conditions or deny the application. All persons have the right through the mayor to ask questions of staff or other speakers, to seek clarification of comments made by staff or other speakers, and respond to comments or presentation of staff or speakers. All, uh, people presenting written materials to the council for consideration must ensure a copy of those materials that's provided to the clerk for inclusion in the council's record of proceedings and official minutes. While the city council welcomes comments from all persons with an interest in this proceeding for to law requires, the council's decision and quasi-judicial actions be supported by competent and substantial evidence presented to the council during the hearing on the application. Competent and substantial evidence is evidence a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. There must be a factual basis in the record to support opinion testimony from both expert and non-expert witnesses. People presenting testimony may support their testimony by relying on factual information provided by city staff, the applicant, or other information in the city staff report. At this time, I need to inquire of each council member individually if they have received any ex parte communications involving any of these matters, and if so, to disclose them, and an ex parte communication is a communication regarding these matters that has taken place outside of, uh, a public meeting. Uh, starting with, uh, Councilwoman Young, have you had any ex parte communications regarding any of these four matters?
I have not.
Okay, and Councilwoman Carter?
No.
Uh, Councilwoman Jernigan?
No.
Uh, Councilwoman Harris?
No.
Uh, and Mayor Walker?
I have, uh, but I've checked with you in terms of the, um, it will not skew my impartiality, though. So do I need to...
Uh, if, if you could disclose the, uh, the, the people that you had those conversations with, if you're able to...
Sure. I had communication with, uh, Commissioner Hollingsworth, um, from the county commission, um, and I believe that's it.
Okay, and that would not affect your ability to give a fair and impartial hearing to the, uh, matters before you tonight?
No.
Okay. Uh, at this time, if each person who will offer testimony or speak to these applications, and actually, we're gonna take them in order, so, uh, if you're gonna speak to the first annexation regarding Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank, if you could stand and raise your right hand and take an oath, uh, do each of you, each of you who are about to enter, uh, okay, uh, who are about to offer testimony tonight, uh, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. Uh, council members, you have before you proposed ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five Dash Twenty Three Oh Seven on second reading, which states an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida, pursuant to petition number ANX Twenty-Five Oh Three, submitted by Seacoast National Bank, formerly known as Drummond National Bank, relating to voluntary annexation, annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, and to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, making certain findings of fact and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. At this time, Mr. Thomas, if you could please come and provide the city's presentation.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Given that it's second reading, staff has no additional, uh, evidence or testimony to present, uh, at this time. However, staff is, is here to answer questions, as are the applicants for all the quasi-judicials. With the exception of the annexation of, the new annexation that's on first reading, we have a presentation for that.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and are you moving into the record your prior presentation from the prior hearing?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, at this time, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. Simone Savino with Sterns Weaver Miller on behalf of the applicant. Um, we were here two weeks ago, and we were able to walk through our full presentation. Um, we're here at the pleasure of council today. If there's questions or more information is needed, we're happy to walk through the presentation again. Otherwise, we've got the full applicant team present and ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, and are you moving into the record your prior presentation and testimony?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, we have a new presentation to move in, in place, if you need it. It's, it's, we just updated one slide, so...
Okay. Um, are you able to pull that one slide to at least...
Yes.
One we're talking about.
Uh, hello, Cynthia Spidel, four oh one East Jackson Street, and I have been sworn. Um, yeah, we updated the date, and we removed some typos off of one of the slides.
Okay, so non-substantive.
Non-substantive, correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, at this time, uh, I don't have any record of anyone filing, uh, for an intervention. Uh, is there, uh, anyone here that is a party intervenor? And if not, uh, are there members of the public that wish to comment on this particular annexation? All right, seeing none, uh, at this time, uh, is there any response by either of the parties to anything that the other party has offered? Mr. Thomas, applicant, no. Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate for the council to ask any questions they may have.
Does the council have any questions on this annexation?
No questions.
No questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, are the parties waiving final arguments? Okay. The decision of the council should be based only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses and documentation moved into evidence. The application may be adopted if the property proposed to be annexed is contiguous to current municipal boundaries, if it is reasonably compact, and if the application for voluntary annexation bears all signatures of owners of property in the area that is proposed to be annexed and otherwise complies with applicable state laws. At this time, the council may discuss the application, any testimony, and should the council desire, may vote on the proposed ordinance number 2025-2307 following a motion and second to adopt said ordinance as read on second reading by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-2307.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Dernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you now have before you the next two items are ordinances number 2025-2309 and 2025-2310. If we have folks, and we'll give it just a second for the audience to clear out, just so we're not.
Just give it a moment. All right, Mr. Martin, will you please proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These two ordinance or ordinances are companion ordinances. The first is a change to the future land use map. The second is the corresponding rezoning on an application filed by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering as agent for Odom Moses and Company. If the individuals who are here to testify or offer presentations or public comment on these items could stand and raise your right hand, do you each swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth? All right, thank you. Council members, before you have proposed ordinance 2025-2309 on final reading, which states an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida amending the future land use plan map of the city of Lake City Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment of 50 or less acres of land pursuant to an application CPA 2501 by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Odom Moses and Company LLP, the property owner of said acreage under the amendment procedures established in sections 163.3161 through 163.3248 Florida statutes as amended, providing for changing the future land use classification from county highway interchange to city commercial of certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Lake City, Florida, making findings of fact and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to the previous action, the staff does not have any additional evidence or testimony to provide on this, on this petition, but is here to answer questions and would like to read the staff report from the first hearing, first reading into the record.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Jones?
Yes, I don't have any additional testimony from the first reading, but I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. If neither of you want to respond to each other, then does the council have any questions for any of the participants?
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Thomas? I don't hear any.
Okay, thank you. No further presentation from the parties. The city council should make its decision based only on the evidence provided by sworn witnesses. At this time, the council may adopt the ordinance if it preserves the internal consistency of the city's comp plan, complies with applicable state laws and does not confer special privileges or rights on any person. At this time, the council may discuss the application and testimony and vote on the proposed ordinance 2025-2309 following an appropriate motion and second. If the council wishes to adopt this ordinance, an appropriate motion would be to adopt the ordinance as read by title only on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt number 2025-2309?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 2025-2309.
Second.
Thank you both. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Dernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, the next item is ordinance number 2025-2310. The parties have been sworn. This is companion rezoning to the land use change that was just considered. The title is an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida amending the official zoning act of the city of Lake City Land Development Regulations as amended relating to the rezoning of less than 10 contiguous acres of land pursuant to an application Z 2501 by Christopher Lance Jones of Jones Engineering and Consulting as agent for Odom Moses and Company LLP, the property owner of said acreage, providing for rezoning from county commercial highway interchange, or CHI, to city commercial intensive, or CI, of certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff does not have any further additional testimony or evidence to provide on the case beyond what was presented in the first hearing, and would like to read the staff report from the first hearing into the record.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Jones, do you adopt your comments from the first hearing and move those into the record as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public wishes to comment on this application? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate for the council to ask any questions at this time.
Does anybody have any questions on number 16? All right, we don't have any.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council should base its decision only on evidence provided by sworn witnesses. You can also take into consideration the recommending of the planning and zoning board and those matters listed in section 15.2.2 of the city's land development regulations. If the council wishes to adopt this ordinance on second and final reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt ordinance number 2025-2310 as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt number 2025-2310 on final reading?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve city council ordinance 2025-2310.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Dernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. Now, we're going to move to item number 20 since we moved it up in the agenda, which is the last quasi judicial hearing item, and I believe what a lot of people are here for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you, well, before we do that, who here tonight is going to speak on this particular item number? This is annexation 24, I mean 25-04 concerning the area of Real Terrace and Real Terrace LLC. Okay, if each of you could stand and raise your right hand and?
Let me ask you a question real fast, Mr. Martin. Does that include everybody that signed up for public comment?
If they want their testimony to be considered by the council, it needs to be offered under oath. They can offer their comments without taking an oath, but the council could not necessarily consider, properly consider them.
Okay. And let me just read that list real fast for anybody in the audience. If you want your testimony to be considered by council, that's Mr. Tom Eagle, Nancy Turner, Terry Rasmussen, Kevin Parnell, Robert Russell and Robbie Hollingsworth. Thank you.
All right.
Please proceed.
All right, thank you. If each could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. Council members, you have before you proposed ordinance 25, 2025-2311, an ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida pursuant to petition number ANX 2504 submitted by Real Terrace LLC relating to voluntarily voluntary annexation annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Lake City, Florida and to the boundaries of the city of Lake City, Florida, making certain findings of fact and support thereof, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict and providing an effective. Mr. Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, stated as ordinance 2025-2311, annexation petition 2504 is a request to annex parcel 02519-000 into the city. The parcel is contiguous on one-sided to the city of Lake City municipal boundary is reasonably compact. I think there's about 925 foot of contiguous area between the, that and the city and this parcel. Petition meets all the applicable statutory criteria for annexation. Give you a visual of where it's at. The opposite side of Real Terrace along that southern sort of diagonal line on the parcel line is already in the city of Lake City. The applicants had to take off a piece on that sort of southwest corner to maintain open boundary with the county unannexed parcels, and it'll be a little more clear on the next slide. So, you can just kind of see in dark red the outline of the parcel, but the, this area right here remains open and unincorporated Columbia County. And so therefore, it does not create an enclave to the south. Therefore, staff recommends approval ordinance 2025-2311 on first reading. I'd like to read the staff report into the record, please.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here to present on behalf of the applicant?
Could we put that shot back up there showing the parcel? Mayor, city council, city manager, vice manager, appreciate the opportunity. My name's Tom Eagle. I live in Lake City over 30 years. I do commercial real estate. This opportunity came about a year ago, and I put a group together that most of them are in Lake City. We purchased it with a vision, and that's what we have right now, because utilities are available through the city, water, sewer. This seemed like the most sensible thing, because it's one of the last pieces of commercial property in the business district. If you look at the south side is Walmart. The other side is Lowe's. You've got Gleason Mall right there. It's, my vision is, is a perfect location for possibly get a big box, Target, Costco. It could be a mixed-use development like they do in Gainesville, where you have retail downstairs, apartments upstairs. It could be a multitude of things. When we did, we've gone and done a wetland survey, and the usable part is about 15 to 18 acres up on the corner of Real Terrace and Bascom Norris. So, the balance of it is in either the wetland or the flood zone at this point in time. Even though some vegetation is changing, when they put the retention ponds in and put the road in, it's changed some of that vegetation, but right now, we're focused on that top piece is what I think could possibly be a big box or something along that line. What I also envision and have spoken about, and I'd have to get all the partners to agree, but there's probably going to be half of that property that's more suitable for a park next to those ponds. If I can get somebody to put fountains in them, it backs up to the lake over there on that corner. It'd be great for walking trails, no matter what goes in there. And as you know, the other thing that's happening here is, is a 500 acre mega park that the county's involved in, and I'm 100% for it. All that traffic is going to come from those hotels. That's going to be a destination for ball players and those type of things. That traffic is coming up Real Terrace. So, to me, when I, when I start doing the marketing, we took it off the market when I bought it. I've got a five-year plan, don't have any plan other than a vision, but the, when I can get out the, the numbers, our Publix does 2.3 million visits a year. Our Walmart does 2.8 million visits a year. We've got to get that knowledge out to the Costcos and the Targets to try to get, because I know everybody would love to have one. So, I think there's been a misconception of what we intend or are going to try to do. That's what I got to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eagle. I would remind the council, the issue before the council tonight is just the annexation, not any future development.
Right.
Which would go through its own hearing process.
Yeah. Thank you.
At this time, I don't have any record of any party intervenors. Mr. Mayor, you have the cards for comment from the public if you wish to proceed with public comment.
We will proceed with public comment, and we will begin with Ms. Nancy Turner. No?
I'll decline now. I just wanted to hear what the public said about it.
Okay.
It's already zoned commercial.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Terry Rasmussen?
I just came because there was kind of a rumor going around, you know, they, the same developers and the same owners came to us on Lake Jeffrey and Bascom Norris wanting to build apartments and do a lot, do a lot line homes. And we've had about 500, 600 people came against that. So, now the same owners are coming up to do this, and I had heard they were doing apartments. So, it's good to know that it's going to be commercial and hopefully it'll stay commercial. Our concern is, this is their way of getting down our way, down to Lake Jeffrey and Bascom and to keep going and build those apartments and those houses. But as long as this stays commercial, and I hope you understand that that's, that's what he said, that we hope it stays that way, and not the apartments that we thought he was going to do. So, hopefully that's the direction, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rasmussen. And any change, just to be clear, any change in the use will have to come back before the board. Mr. Eagle?
Can I clarify? I had nothing to do with Lake Jeffrey. This piece, this corner, about three and a half miles.
We'll show, we'll show the relative. Thank you. I do have, Mr. Kevin Parnell, you're next.
So, I could be wrong. I agree with Ms. Rasmussen. This feels like a very distasteful backdoor approach to making this into a multi-use land area where it's going to be apartments. This does feel that way to me and to a lot of the people that I've talked to in District One. I think it's the land grab that's going to end up wrapping around to towards Lake Jeffrey, and it's going to have apartment complex there, which is going to be very distasteful. It's got zero regard to the folks who live in that area. They haven't had a chance to say, hey, we don't really want this. When they purchased their land, they didn't purchase it with intent of an apartment complex or Target being next to their houses. So, they want to keep it in that area that it's in. This came across the board account of commercials already, and we did vote it down. I would just ask that we do not annex this property to go toward them. It is the same developer. I feel as though it's going to be the apartment complex, and it's going to be very, very bad on traffic as well. So, that's my spew on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parnell. Mr. Robert Russell?
I share some of the same concerns as the other residents. I live off Lake Jeffrey. I have an 11 acre property, which the previous Penelope Place was going to butt up against my property, and I was against that. I have similar concerns to that, gentlemen. This will be something used to make a wraparound to get those properties and build those complexes, and they're using it to change zoning because the county had gone against those zoning concerns, because the area was made for one unit per half acre, and the proposed buildings was 400 units, over 400 units, which would have been over double what was required of the area. And the area is an AE and A flooding area all along Bascom Norris, and in 2012, there was a tropical depression that caused flooding of multiple properties. My whole land flooded. Luckily, my house didn't. My neighbor's house is flooded. I just want to make sure, because he's saying it's for a Target or anything else. If that's the case, okay, and it's further down. If it's not the apartment complex, okay. But the infrastructure needs to be there for it. It's a two-lane road. Millennium construction is down that road. They have 18-wheelers coming down it all day and night, 24/7. I just want to make sure if this is going to happen, the infrastructure's there, and that they're not moving forward to change zoning in a way to undermine the constituents of the county. That's the only concerns I wanted to raise today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Robbie Hollingsworth?
First, I want to thank the board for hearing me today. I want to talk about this. I too feel that this is a, this is an attempt to, you know, meander into annexation so that you can buy a piece of property and maybe annex the other, the old Penelope Place property to use that as a new Penelope Place. And, you know, when, if all this happens, if this happens, if we have this, this, the citizens that are most affected are going to be the people in the county, the same ones that came to this, came to our meeting and talked about it. It was adamantly rejected by the citizens of the county. The zoning change is really kind of radical. You went from, you know, half acre lots to, like the young man said, 400 people, 400 units. That's a pretty big deal. And, and what really, and we're on the front end of this, and that's why we're here, is to make sure that this isn't what's going to happen, because it seems to me, after this happened, I had, I heard rumors, well, we're going to try to annex and get it into the city so we can put up Penelope Place-type project in it. So, the traffic study and that thing was almost maxed out that road. And we have plans for the flat fields, you know, for our children, because we're in recreation still. I know y'all are out, but God bless you, because it's, it's a tough thing. But we, we're going to have traffic from that, and, and this thing makes it almost to the nth degree of traffic. So, we're going to have to go, the really only thing the flat field's going to happen is that we're going to have to rebuild that road. And that road is a raised, you know, raised road, you know what it would call. It would cost millions of dollars to fix that. That concerns me. You know, us in the, us in the, we really have a good relationship now. Mr. Roden, Sol, Mr. Carter, all you guys. And the thing is, if this comes to fruition, like I think it's going to, I hope that I could, I could get, you know, y'all not to support it, because the thing is, is when a, when a county has so much rejection for something, and the people don't want it, and the people that most affected are, are going to live in the county, the city people won't be much affected by it. But I hope that you think about it. You know, I hope you put yourself in our place. You know, we have a place that was rejected. You know, we have a place that was rejected. We have a place that, if it comes about, and I think it will, that is going to affect us really, more harshly than will the city. So I hope that you would know that we wouldn't do something like that. If y'all were completely against something, and then it came before us, we'd be like, yeah, I don't think we're going to do that, because the city didn't want it, then we don't either. And that's up to you. Y'all are the bosses of the city, so you do what you want to do. But it's just one of those things that I think is a step forward to this. And I'm representing the people in my district. I'm here to just get ahead of this. And I can't really speak to the annexation so much this one today, because, but if it leads to that, I really am concerned that that will happen, and I would appreciate, you know, you guys thinking about our partnership and the things we do together. Because we really, I'll tell you what, y'all, it is amazing, we're 20, we've got a 20-year new here. We're all getting along. The city and the county are doing great together. We've got great projects. So I appreciate y'all hearing, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingsworth. Turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. At this time, does the applicant wish to respond to?
We've closed, we've closed public comment, sorry.
Does the applicant wish to respond to any presentations by any of the speakers?
Again, we're working on a vision. This is the heart of Business District. It's one of the last pieces, and only about 20, 18 to 20 acres is the usable part at this point in time. The people that have spoke here live three and a half miles away from that corner. I ran it on our computer. So I understand their concern. I've been here 30-something years, and I own a lot of stuff. You think I'm going to do anything to hurt anything? I'm going to try to get the best thing for the community on that corner. And it's a very, very valuable corner. It's the reason I'm not even marking it right now.
Thank you. Does city staff wish to respond to anything? Nothing from city staff. At this time, Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate for questions from the council to any of the presenters.
Great. All right, I'll give everybody an opportunity first. Let's start with you, Vice Mayor. Do you have any questions?
I would like to pass to Mr. Rosenthal. I would like his, him to talk, to give us some information on this.
Well, right down the property is zoned commercial. And to do anything else with the property, they'd have to come back to the city for rezoning. At that point, you could decide not to zone it, or to zone it in such a way that it restricts their concerns, the county's concerns. So they can't build the kind of building that the county is concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Do you have a question?
Of the county's concerns are?
This, 400 units being too close to their property lines.
The apartments?
Yeah, it's a legitimate concern.
Yeah. So I think that the concern comes from a couple months ago. And Phillip, will you bring, will you pull that map up for me on the property appraiser's website? The property on the corner of, it's a different property, on the corner of Lake Jeffrey and Bascom Norris, there was, there was concern about a development that was happening. It's further north of there. There you go. Slide up a little bit more, right there. So there's a few pieces of property, and between that property and the property that we're talking about now, there's two layers of properties in between there. And right now, we're only talking about annexing the one here on the corner of Real Terrace and Bascom Norris. There would be two more meetings, correct, Mr. Rosenthal or Mr. Martin? Please answer this for me. If they, if Mr. Eagle and his partners chose to change the zoning on this property, that they would have to go through where citizens could come and speak to those zoning changes if they so chose, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any else have any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
Ms. Eagle, can you come mic up there for me, please?
Sir. My question to you would be, with the constituents' concern, you're for sure telling me that this will not be apartments and things of that nature.
I am one of the constituents, too. I live in the county. I've been here 32 years. A couple of apartments, partners in this project live in this county and are astute business people. I can't, I don't know what is going to be. What if we ended up with something like, a developer, we're not going to develop it. Past that point, I'm 80 years old. I'm not developing anymore. What if a developer came in that wanted to do something like they did down in Gainesville, at Hale Plantation, where you have retail downstairs and nice apartments upstairs? We definitely need some things that they need to do, something like that. You guys will restrict what's going to happen there. And I don't want anything, I guarantee you, that would hurt this city or this town. And I think most people know that. And I've been able to bring a lot of money into this town from South Florida where I came from. And I'm proud of it, and I'm going to stay proud of it.
But again, Mr. Eagle, real fast, by your experience, whenever you, you would have to go through a zoning change through this board, if we annexed it into the city tonight, you would have to come back before us and ask us, hey, can we put apartments over this? At which time, it would be our choice whether to say yes or no.
I don't think, what I'm going to ask for that property, you can afford to put partners on it. I think you're going to have to have a big box. I own apartment land in Lake City right now. I own, we bought the University of Florida piece right behind, I bought the Social Security building, the old Social Security building. I've got all that land back there, 16 units, eight units per acre, 240, 230 units. We own it zoned, ready to go, utilities. I have, it's just about, it's unaffordable to build in today's environment unless you can get rent 17,000 to 2,000 a month for a two-bedroom. Those are the numbers. That's why you don't see it happening right now. There will be some other subsidy programs, either the federal or the state, excuse me, will come in and do. I don't, I'm not involved in any of that. But I do own property, already zoned, utilities available, ready to go, and I'm not getting any inquiries, and they're on all our websites. And we spend over 2,000 a month in my commercial marketing. That's why we're doing what we're doing. So we have land already zoned in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Eagle?
I wanted to know, did anybody reach out to the people that lives around that area to see how they feel about? These are the people?
Well, yeah, a lot of those folks are out on Lake Jeffrey. But right now, again, we're not discussing the use of the property. We're discussing whether or not to annex it into the city, which they would have to bring the use to us for approval.
Approval. It's just a vision. It's a vision, and the man will make something happen. But to think it's going to be, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I hope we see 40 acres of it or 30 acres of it in park. I don't have any problem with it. I'd probably just give it away if I don't need it, once I get what's going in the top part. But can you imagine, they've got the two lakes there, people fish there all the time. I'd love to get a couple fountains in those things. They're only $1,800 a pop. And that lake back there, I haven't been to it, but I believe there's a lot of fish, maybe a couple alligators back there, too. That would be great, walking trails, even if it was a residential community. It could be townhouses. It can be homes. It could be apartments. But you can't build them today if you can't get 18,000 to $2,000 a month in Lake City, Florida. And that's why we're not having as much construction as we'd like to have.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Brian.
Mr. Thomas?
We're talking a lot about what we can and can't allow to happen in the future. With the recent changes in the law due to the Live Local Act, this already being zoned commercial, is that, is that a change we'll be able to make in the future?
So, Mr. Mayor, the change, the change to the like Live Local Act, the exemption that the council recently voted on, that did exempt the economic incentive for affordable housing within a certain bracket. It did not exempt the city from certain aspects of the Local, Live Local Act. So in theory, somebody could do that, but they would have to then devote a substantial portion to the very low income, which makes, generally is going to make it unaffordable because without the additional subsidies, you have, you need that mix of the low income, the moderate income, which qualifies as low income, generally to make that work. That's the portion that was exempted. And so then, it makes it even less financially feasible to do a Live Local Act project in the city of Lake City. To the mayor's point, they would have to come back at least two times, if not more, before you, to make the decision to change the zoning to allow them to some category that would allow for multifamily. And at that, it's, if it's market-driven, that's going to be a big consideration as well. So the council will have ample opportunity to discuss a minimum of two, if not more, meetings before that would, that would be allowable. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Do we have any pertaining to this property and contiguous properties? Do we have any other applications to annex property and from, on the northern part of this property?
Mr. Mayor, we do not. In fact, the staff has reached out to one of the landowners, a substantial-sized parcel to the north, and they have indicated pretty strongly they have no interest in annexing into the city. Obviously, that could change in the future, but that's their indication of us was, we are not going to annex anytime soon.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Thomas while he's at the dais?
Not, I don't have a question for Mr. Thomas, but if I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
About show of hands, could you, let me see who all live in this area, that's close to this area? And by show of hand, who really wants this to be annexed? Just a question.
I would be leery if we did annex it, annexing any further north to alleviate those, to alleviate those concerns of it being a backdoor way into that old property. I would be, I would be against it, to be honest, because I don't want, we need commercial development in town. It's good for the tax base. It decreases your taxes on your home, because commercial tax base carries the weight of the majority of expenditures in a community. So having another commercial property within the city limits would be great financially for the city and for the constituents that live in and around the city. That doesn't mean that we have to annex all the way up Lake Jeffrey. So that's, I'm just thinking out loud for you guys. Mr. Martin, what's our next part of the process?
Mr. Mayor, before we move to the next part of the process, I wanted to ask the mayor's permission to consult with Mr. Thomas just real quickly on a technical issue.
Sure.
If he could come up. Give me just a second.
Do we need to recess?
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to call for a three-minute recess, though, because I need a bathroom break. Three. Three. Everybody ready? Folks, it's been a little over three minutes, I apologize. If we could bring order back to the meeting, call this meeting of May 5th. Back to order. We're still on item number 20, which is the City Council Ordinance Number 2025-2311, the annexation of real terrace property. We've, I'll turn it back over to you, Clay, to bring us up to point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So procedurally, the council, I think, had completed its questions of the parties, is that correct? Were there any more questions from members of council?
I don't believe that there were any more questions from council.
Okay, given that, the next part of the hearing would be to hear final comments from the parties. First, we would hear from city, or actually, we would hear from, let's see, the applicant. Mr. Eagle, did you have any final comments?
I'm fine.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas, did you have any final comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, did want to make a clarification, consulting with city attorney, and he was right. The property as it stands right now is actually zoned RSF2, which, in the county, RSF2 is 20,000 square foot minimum lots. And so it wouldn't, the city's standard practice is to bring the land use and zoning in as the most equivalent category to what it is when it's annexed. So we would also be bringing it in at an equivalent land use and zoning category. Now, the applicant has the opportunity to then request to upzone, put in an application to zone it to something else. So if he, if the applicant wanted to go to commercial, it would take a separate application to come in at commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Good clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing no further comments, it would move now to discussion amongst the city council and for the council to deliberate and vote on the application for annexation. The annexation application may be approved if the property to be annexed is contiguous to the current boundaries of the city, if it is reasonably compact, and if the application bears all signatures of property owners in the area proposed to be annexed. At this time, the council may discuss the application and on a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2025-2311, as read by title, only proceed to a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Rosenthal, sorry?
Mayor, I would like to suggest that the council might considering table this until the next meeting in view of the, some of the comments we've heard.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Would anybody like to make a motion? What would be the appropriate motion, Mr. Martin?
Mr. Mayor, the appropriate motion would be to continue the hearing until a date certain, either the next meeting or some future time set forth in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. So if somebody would like to make a motion, if anybody has any comments, please, please make them. But if somebody would like to make a motion, it's either to approve or to continue hearing.
I would like for Mr. Rosenthal to state why he want it passed.
Well, I would, I think, I'm suggesting that we table it because I see that's a great deal of confusion. I think if we tabled this meeting, we can annex to the next meeting. I want an opportunity to explain to the, to the commissioners that this isn't going to cause any harm and give them a degree of certainty of that. I think that's what they're concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Martin?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, procedurally, because this is a quasi judicial setting, the council could, if, if there was a motion to continue this, then at the next meeting, the council could move to reopen testimony and allow additional information from staff on the record as to the matters that Mr. Rosenthal has just mentioned, so that those could be responded to by the applicant if he so choose, chose to do so, and then proceed to a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Rosenthal, you had something else?
Yes, and, and if I may, I think that we would pick up right where we left off. When we came to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Eagle?
I have one question. If you're only talking about annexation now, wouldn't what you're suggesting, when a zoning application is put in, the type of application would be the time that you will have total control of what is done at that point in time? Then we sit down with the, I want everybody happy. And I know you do too.
Yes.
To me, that would be the appropriate time when an application comes in for a zoning change.
Well, you, you might be surprised to hear, I think we're fine now. I just don't want the commissioners thinking that we're trying to do something that's gonna harm in the back end.
I don't want to harm.
I already realize that what you're suggesting is not gonna harm anybody, but I want an opportunity to show them that. Then we'll come back, the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal.
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue the hearing on Ordinance 2025-2310 until our next meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion now, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Jernigan, second then. Hearing none. Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. Thank you. All right. So we had moved that item up behind item number 16, so we're coming back to, that closes our quasi judicial section of the meeting. We'll give everybody a moment if you are leaving. We'll move back to item number 17. And this is a resolution, so it's not required to be read by title. I will go ahead and have you, Mr. Foreman, come up to the, come to the mic. This is, item number 17 is City Council Resolution Number 2025-078, pertaining to the attorney contract, particularly with Clay Martin, Mr. Foreman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let them clear that out. Thank you for having me here this evening, councillors. I've had an opportunity to meet with each of you and speak with each of you in the last few days. As you know, I was engaged by Mayor Walker and Mr. Rosenthal to assist the city with negotiation of potential contract with your current city attorney, Clay Martin. I know at a prior meeting, y'all had had some discussion about potentially having a full-time in-house counsel, and then Mr. Martin had expressed some interest in that position. After I was engaged, I did work with Mr. Martin and his attorney, Mr. Maltby. He had his own counsel. We negotiated the contract that's attached in your agenda packet. Again, we've had an opportunity to review it together, but certainly want to have further discussion if there's any to have tonight. Based on those negotiations and based on our discussions, it is my recommendation that if you do wish to engage in-house counsel, and if you are interested in engaging Mr. Martin, that the contract that's been negotiated is fair and equitable and covers all concerns that the city would have. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. What we will do now is we will open up public comment on this item, and then we'll bring you back up for council comment and questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we will open up public comment on this item, item number 17, the attorney contract with Clay Martin. And we will begin with Mr. Todd Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have some concerns as citizens on transparency and accountability in this process. Last meeting, you decided you want to hire an in-house attorney, and this meeting, we're doing one. Now, I know the state allows you to do that, but traditionally, historically, the city has put up an RFQ. It's gone out, and anybody who wants to apply has an opportunity. In addition, tonight, after the performance in item 11, when you were asking a question, Ms. Harris, about if the current ordinance allows for resolution, which it does in Section 86.2F, and you were told incorrectly it did not, and a new ordinance has to come forward, first reading, second reading, and no one got called on it, your attorney should have already known the answer to that and allowed you to do the resolution if you so chose. You got incorrect information. I'm sorry I tried to point that out at the time since you were being given false information. However, I've sat here several times and heard this attorney give information that seems to be not in the best interest of the city or lacking, and I'm not sure if you pay him by the word or how that works, but sometimes a city attorney needs not to be involved in the conversation. You guys are the councillor, he's your attorney, in contact. For example, in the public hearing we just had, not sure why we have an ex parte communication with a city employee that's part of the hearing when he's already been sworn in and we're in a public meeting. You should have adjourned first. That's not the correct protocol. But again, getting back to transparency, accountability, responsibility, the cost savings aren't there. This is going to be more expensive for city residents to bring in an in-house paid person at 150, plus, I don't see anywhere where the cost of the retirement funds are, the one-month time off or PTO or paid time off as well as sick time. I don't see where any of this information is given as a budget item. You're making decisions that affect the budget, affect the finances, and it's not being disclosed to us as citizens. I guess we don't have a budget anymore, we just decide this is what we're gonna do, and that's how we do it. And, you know, I know I've been lax in coming to the meetings, and that's been a mistake, and I'm gonna have to come more often, because you can't go from one meeting having an idea, and then someone up there, I don't know who it was, polls the board and already knows what the votes are before you get to a meeting. That is illegal. This is where decisions are made. You discuss it here, and a decision is made. You don't do this ex parte, having all these, whoever's doing the polling. It's not the way it's done. You don't know what the votes are in advance. If you all talk to the city manager, he can't tell the mayor what Ricky says, he can't tell James what Ricky says or what the mayor says. That's not the way it works. We're under the sunshine here, and I would ask that you would consider the transparency and accountability. I'm against, at this time, engaging this city attorney as a full employee of the city. What's wrong with the current contract? What's the benefit to the city? None of that's laid out. None of it's laid out. You've just decided in two meetings that we're gonna go from a discussion to a contract to an attorney that's getting paid big bucks? I mean, you know who's paying for it? Taxpayers, and we're fed up with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Up next, we will have Mr. Stulokar.
Thank you, Your Honor. Stulokar, Columbia County Observer. I did some last-minute research on this tonight, and thank you for being, recognizing me. The city attorney is not a charter officer, so his contract is wrong. It's a newsflash to this board. I suppose some of you looked at it, and I see Mr. Carter has a questionable look on his face. In February, this board passed a resolution changing the city charter. You can't do that. The charter from 2010 had the city clerk as just a city clerk. You look at the 2020 charter, it says the city clerk is a charter officer. So it already defines who's the charter officer. And your attorney, the one you want to hire tonight without any RFQ or anything, never picked that up. So you only have one charter officer, yet you passed a resolution in February that Mr. Foreman overlooked. You can overlook stuff, I mean, he's a pretty good attorney. You hire him, I guess, that says that he's a charter officer. His contract says he's a charter officer. Well, Clay Martin is not a charter officer, the city attorney is not a charter officer, so the charter is wrong. And you cannot change the charter, Mr. Rosenthal, by a resolution. The charter clearly has to be voted on by the people, like it was in 2010, if there were any amendments then, and 2020, which there are clearly amendments, and they changed the position of the city attorney. And if you look at the charter, it doesn't say he's a charter officer. There's only one charter officer in the city charter, and that's the city clerk, Audrey Sykes. So that's wrong. You didn't put it out in RFQ. That would have worked last time if you hired a good attorney, there are difference opinions on Judge Cobeline. I don't think he did a good job, but some people think he did. But the city had three attorneys to choose from, even though that was kind of a hacked-up thing. And that's what you need to do now. And nobody else will say this, but I will. Anybody who looks at the census, Lake City is a minority community. Minorities should have a chance, and that's women and people that are not white. Should have a chance to apply for this job. And, I mean, I'm not blind. I mean, he's the whitest guy in the room, Clay Martin. So I think you need to put out an RFQ and open it to everybody. Women, as they found in Brown vs. Board of Education, you can't beat if you can't see it. So this is something that this city council needs to recognize. There's nothing in anything that Mr. Rosenthal did that compares like-sized cities of this to people that have in-house attorneys. Nothing. I looked through the stuff, nothing. And I would commend the finance director for the work she did on the spreadsheet. I sent her an email to that effect. There was a lot more information that Mr. Rosenthal could have given this council, but didn't. So I'm requesting that you put out an RFQ and not approve this tonight for those reasons and the reasons that Mr. Sampson mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stulokar. All right, up next, we have Mr. Ben Lostrum.
Some of my questions are, have already been brought up by others. This is a job that's paying 150,000 per year. Wondered how many people applied for this job, or if it was open for people to apply. Also, what is the city currently paying to be represented by his firm on an average year? What's the total cost to the city? Because not only do we have the lawyer at 150,000, the next item was also his assistant, and what other perks will there be? Will he need a vehicle, continuing education, et cetera, et cetera? Looks like he'll be getting 150 grand plus an assistant at least. However, the city manager started out at 165,000, took months to find one, and multiple people were interviewed for the position, and then we finally picked one. Now, on a different subject, if the city ends up pursuing a case to recoup any of the money from the Paul Dial, Todd Cannon issue, will he be able to represent the city if that goes forward? Or is he still tied to the other law firm? And if this happens, will he be only employed by the city? And now he's free to do anything against his old law firm, or how does that affect? That was my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lostrum. Mr. Foreman, will you please come back up? I don't have anybody else signed up for, for public comment. So I will now bring Mr. Foreman back up, and we will open up council comments, questions. You heard some of those questions, can you address them?
Sure.
Or someone, whatever you can.
If, if there was a misunderstanding that I polled the board, that's certainly not what I did. I think you would all agree that I didn't tell you what anybody else said about the contract. I was briefing for me to you, so that you guys would have the benefit of information. With respect to the RFQ question, I know that we did discuss that, or I discussed that with, with you, Mr. Mayor, and with Mr. Rosenthal, it is not uncommon. There's a reason there's an exemption under statute from having to RFQ these kind of things. If you have the person at your disposal, or if you have the person who's expressed interest for something like legal services, you can just hire them. That's Florida law, it's allowed. I know when we entered our discussions, the concept was to determine if a deal could be made with Mr. Martin, with the understanding that if a deal couldn't be made with Mr. Martin, then you would open it up to the world. You know, I think a couple of us made, had discussed that, you know, if you have a known quantity on one hand, why do you risk that by going out to bid and potentially running off that known quantity? With respect to Section 603 of the charter, I don't know the circumstances to change. And so I certainly didn't go in and check on the legal validity of it. I just found it in your charter, Section 603, talking about your city attorney and setting forth what the duties were. That's also where we determined that the city attorney must be responsive to the council, must be responsible to the council. And that's why it was prepared the way it was. Let's see. With respect to vehicle, he had negotiated for the same type of reimbursement that's available under Chapter 112 Florida statutes, the same reimbursement schedule that all employees use, which is the IRS compensation rate. There's also the ability to rent a vehicle. There is no provision for him to be afforded a vehicle. The old items of equipment that he is afforded are a iPad, a laptop, a cellphone, the associated data and usage plans, and then that equipment is returned upon his termination from employment. So, let's see. With respect to conflict, there are layers of ethics associated with conflict with former law firms. Mr. Martin is independently required to navigate the requirements of the rules regulating the Florida bar. You also have your ethics codes, we have Chapter 112. So he'll be layered up in that regard. It is always... It is always the attorney's responsibility to govern his own ethics and to declare conflicts where one appears to exist. So if there is ongoing litigation or things like that that might involve prior or existing clients of Mr. Martin's, then he would have to notify you of that. Was there anything I missed?
In terms of those questions, but now I will open it up to council to ask questions of you. We'll begin with Mr. Carter, I believe.
Mr. Foreman, do you have the article from the charter on hand that describes the role? And is it true that it is not a charter officer? Because...
Well, I've got it from your website. Says it was modified by ordinance in 2020, by ordinance number 2020-2158. But again, I didn't determine the legal validity of it. We didn't litigate the question. But it says that the county, the city attorney is called out at Section 603. The council shall appoint a city attorney and such assistant city attorneys as it deems necessary, who shall act as legal advisors to the city and all of its officers and matters relating to their official duties. Subsection A relates to tenure of office and qualifications. Subsection B relates to powers and duties enumerated. So it does appear to be an office called out by your charter that you are required to specifically fill. I view that as a charter officer. Now, you can argue that maybe it's not, but you know, we call all of our constitutional officers constitutional officers because they appear in the Constitution of the state of Florida. There's...
Mr. Stulokar.
If you want Mr. Martin to take an oath, he probably will. He's taken many, so... But that's not part of the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Further questions for Mr. Foreman? Could you, for me, speak to the severance section in the contract discussed?
Of course. So Florida statute, Section 215.425, caps severance at 20 weeks. It's the most you're allowed to give. And in fact, your contract can't say more than 20 weeks, or it's statutorily reformed by that section. And so you are capped at 20 weeks under your severance section, which is Section 11. Section 11 subsection B, if the employee's employment is terminated, the employer shall provide a severance payment equal to 20-week salary at the then-current rate of pay. The severance shall be paid in lump sum or in continuation of salary, et cetera. To be clear about that, though, that paragraph makes it sound like termination for any circumstance. It's only a termination under Section 10, which is an involuntary termination without cause. So if you come in and vote one night, which you can, we no longer want Mr. Martin to be our attorney, and you vote to send him away, you will owe him 20-week severance. If he's terminated for cause or if he resigns, there's a litany of other circumstances where he might part company, he will not be entitled to that severance. You do have accumulated leave, accrued leave, and I know you guys did adopt an exception to that under your policy. Your policy, I think, currently caps at 320, 320 hours. Mr. Martin would be exempted by your ordinance, and therefore, the contract does not have that cap. I think Mr. Rosenthal maybe has a similar provision, and I don't know if Ms. Sykes may or may not, but I think they're eligible for the exemption. And then the other requirement of 215.425 is that you incorporate the malfeasance and misconduct requirements of Section 443.036 sub 29, which is in here. So y'all are covered on the severance front.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm also curious about a point that was brought up, Mr. Sampson, I believe, about us passing an ordinance that changed the charter this year? Did we pass an ordinance that changed the charter? We had a resolution, sorry.
Ms. Sykes, would you speak to that real fast?
We did not, not to my knowledge, we did not pass the ordinance that changed the charter. There was a resolution that was passed earlier in the year. It didn't change the charter, though. It... And maybe Mr. Martin can speak to it a little bit better, but it's Resolution 2025-ZR25. And the title just simply says, "A Resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, Amending the City of Lake City Personnel Manual, Exempting Certain Employees of the City from the Classification System Established by SAME, Clarifying the Exemption of the Charter Officers or of the City from Certain Provisions of the Personnel Manual, Making Certain Findings of Fact and Support Thereof, Directing the City Manager to Implement the Amendments Adopted Hereby, Repealing All Prior Resolutions in Conflict and Providing Ineffective Date."
Thank you, Ms. Sykes.
Thank you.
I think I would ask your opinion on this, Mr. Foreman, just for the clarification, the clarity of everyone at home. Was there anything untoward about this process? And did you collect any votes prior to us coming into this room?
Absolutely not. So again, to be clear, I personally conferred with four of you on Friday. Neither one of you were there when the others were. Everybody was in their own session, and then Mr. Jernigan, I had an opportunity to speak with him for about eight minutes today. I think Ricky would attest to that, to make sure. And again, when you're voting on a contract, particularly when you're talking about engaging your attorney, and so you don't have the benefit of his advice, I thought it was important just to reach out to each of you and spend that time. And for what it's worth, I thought it was constructive, because some of the questions that we're talking about right now, you guys asked me in session. So no, no polling. I think I told each one of you, if you don't really want to engage him, you don't vote for the contract. I mean, it's pretty simple. It's as simple as that. My job was to make sure that the contract, if you adopt it, is going to protect the city. And I believe that I've done my job.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. I wanted to make that pointed question to you because I value my time with my young daughter too much to break the law in such a stupid manner, as which was implied. So I will now ask the council, do they have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Foreman, just to show transparency, because I got a lot of phone calls about people were saying about the RFQ. And they wanted it to take place. Could you explain to them the hiring process of the council as far as... Just give them the information about how we came about being able to hire him.
Sure. There's a statute called the CCNA, the Competitive Consultants Negotiation Act. I probably said that wrong. Still, correct me, I'm sure. There are certain things you have to put out to bid, right? And legal services is one of the things that you do not have to put out to bid. So again, it's not uncommon if you have the attorney that you want to engage, right? And he's right there. You did authorize, I believe, the mayor to go out and negotiate on your behalf. I think you authorized Mr. Rosenthal. If I got that wrong again, I apologize. But it's my understanding that people that I was talking to were authorized by the council to engage. You engage that negotiation and you find out, because you may find out you can't make a deal. You know, we may have started those negotiations and Mr. Martin said, "Oh, well, what I haven't mentioned before is I want a Lamborghini." You know, "Well, we can't give you a Lamborghini." "Well, then, we don't have a deal." We don't know that until you negotiate. So, Ms. Harris, it's not uncommon, right? This is not unusual to go reach out to the person that you already have on the board, see what they think, see how they do. And then if you reach an impasse there and you really don't have any prospects, then you put it out. Bidding can be a risky prospect, because if you do go out to bid, you could find out that the entire market has just gone way up, right? So you don't know what you have. The point of me negotiating the contract and presenting to you tonight was to tell you what you have, and now you can decide how you want to proceed on that. If the board wishes to RFQ, you simply don't pass the, you don't adopt the contract, and then you go to RFQ.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman. Any other questions for Mr. Foreman?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Rosenthal and perhaps Ms. Taylor.
Sure.
Do we have the total numbers on what our legal has been costing us last year or two?
We had that at the last meeting, and we gave it to everybody. I didn't bring it with me this meeting. I can get it and get it for you.
If I can, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
So the important thing, and it's in the contract, you're going from an hourly rate, where you're paying for each and every hour, to you now have all of his hours, right? So if you take that, if you want to do an apples-to-apples, you need to take your hourly rate and multiply it by 40 hours per week, by 50 hours, 50 weeks a year, to get a comparable number. And so that's why when you look at what you're actually spending and you look at the actual hours that Mr. Martin is expending in service to the city, it's not going to be apples-to-apples, unless you run that math. So that was part of one of the discussions that we had on Friday. Was it you, Ms. Harris? Where we talked about how your contract requires Mr. Martin to devote substantially 100% of his productive professional time to being the City of Lake City's attorney. The only exception to that rule would be if he gets prior written authorization from your city manager to engage in moonlighting work. And then even if he does that, he has to do it outside normal business hours. So when you lock in a contract like this on true in-house counsel, it's like hiring that employee, right? You get him full-time. So it's a very valid point that I think the public doesn't necessarily understand when you say, "Oh, $150,000." Think about how many hours $150,000 would buy you under your existing contract, and then figure out what you're getting when you do go full-time in-house.
Mr. Rosenthal.
And to Joel's point, we were getting a little over 1,000 hours under the contract. And that's 2,080 hours in a year's work. So we'll be getting that full 2,080 hours.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Mr. Mayor, one last question for Mr. Foreman. Mr. Foreman, obviously, you have a little bit of experience with the small-town government attorney. Do you have an opinion on an in-house attorney for the City of Lake City? Do you have an opinion on us hiring one in-house?
I will share with you my first thought when I heard that Mr. Martin might be interested in working here. And I heard the number, $150,000. And my first thought, I think I might have shared it with Ms. Rosenthal, if you can get him for that, you hire him. Because that's not, I mean, that's not typical, right? That he's willing to come up and do that. And I wish he wasn't there sitting there looking at me, but that's true. And, you know, Mr. Jernigan asked me an interesting question earlier today. "Joel, why don't you do this as the county attorney?" And what did I tell you? I tried one time. I actually offered the contract to the county one time, and they tabled it. So it can be a really good dynamic if, in fact, you do like him, right? If you don't, it can be a really bad dynamic, but you guys also supervise him, and you review him once a year. He's on a June 15 to June 15 calendar, but every April under the contract, you will review him. So you will have a thumb on your attorney to the extent you need one.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Young.
If I may, Mayor, when we look at what we have now or had, or we look at, we had an attorney that we had to share with at least five other councils, five other county cities. So we were just getting a little bite. So when we look at the money, I always say, "You get what you pay for." It's going to come out, it's going to seem to come out more money, but you're getting more productivity. We'll have an effective attorney. That's what we expect. We can expect that now. We couldn't expect that before, because we know we only had him for a short amount of time, because he wasn't, he didn't belong to Lake City only. So I just believe in paying a little more to get what we need. So that's how I've digested all of this. And it's, I'm not going to say it's a tough decision, but you have, I've put a lot of thought into it, you know? And I asked, the other thing is, I did ask, as I did in the last meeting, was it advertised? So I would like to know, how was it advertised? And what was the, what was the, did we get any?
Joel, will you cover that part real quick?
No. And councillor, it's my understanding it was not advertised to allow this process to go forward. And then if this process wasn't successful and didn't bear fruit, then you would advertise. So to be clear, if I didn't, I think maybe we tried to answer that Friday, but I probably didn't do a very good job. I don't think it was advertised at all, right? So Mr. Walker and Mr. Rosenthal asked me to see if I could work a deal with Mr. Martin. That's what this is. And then if this deal doesn't work for you guys, then you'll go out and see if there's other people that might have interest in the job.
Because again, there's a statute at the state level that allows us to do that. We know that it's a gamble whenever you open up the RFQ. You might run away what you got. You might get swings for the fences by everybody else, and then what you got actually comes back and says, "I am interested," but it's going to be another $250,000 more than we originally discussed. And annualized, and working out the numbers on a 2,000-hour basis, this popped into my head from two weeks ago, we're actually coming in, if we approve and hire an assistant as well, the amount that we'd be paying for both is equivalent or less than the average than we've been paying on an annualized basis per hour over the last decade to decade and a half. Totals, maybe not, but annualized, 2,000 hours to 2,000 hours, way less.
Your effective hourly rate for Mr. Martin will be $75 an hour.
With benefits, or still less. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Foreman? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Foreman.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, one thing for Mr. Foreman that we discussed this afternoon, and that was to start on the 16th of June rather than the 15th, because the 15th is a Sunday.
Okay.
I apologize. Actually, Mr. Maltbe called me, and I forgot about that. Thank you. Your contract says start date 15th. I mean, he can start Sunday, but in fairness, he wanted to say he's going to start the 16th. It's a Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman.
Well, he will be available on Sundays, though, right?
I think we'll start at 15th, if we do. If council chooses to move forward.
He may be mad at me for saying this, but yeah, your contract kind of says he is. So you do have to give him time off.
Thank you.
He responds on Sundays, yes.
Okay. We've, does anybody else have any questions, comments? Want to make any motions?
I would like to comment, if I may. I have utilized attorney Clay a lot. And if I won't be too embarrassed to say, I call him a lot of times by mistake. I really do. I don't know why, but Siri likes to dial his number. But I just, I do believe that we will get more out of Mr. Clay, a lot more. And I really believe that, I'll just say, I would like to give him a chance to prove himself, because that's the only way we're going to know, him proving himself. And I'm willing to vote, allow that.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anybody else have any comments or would like to move forward?
Was that a motion, Mr. Mayor?
It was not. Was that a motion?
I can make the motion.
That's your prerogative, if you'd like.
Go ahead, Carter. He wants, he likes all the motions.
Mr. Mayor, move to a previous city council resolution, 2025-078.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion by the council? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please? Oh, sorry, Mr. Jernigan, I didn't see you going forward.
Yes, I'd like to say something about this, if I may. Mr. Martin, you know, he's, he's, he did what he's got to deal with, with the City of Lake City and those other cities that he deals with. I must say, it's a lot. With that being said, I think he brings a vast amount of knowledge to the city. And I just hope and pray that he, instead of that 50% that he's been giving us, I hope he give us 100%. And we're, you know, just keep the citizens and the, of this community, just keep that process, and I think we'll do, we'll do fine with Mr. Martin. Wanted to make sure I said that about Mr. Martin. And I appreciate Mr. Joel looking into it the way he did. Again, that's that county and city relationship that we have, Mr. Rosenthal and you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Y'all got a good relationship, so let's just keep that going, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Motion and a second. We've had some comment. Any further comments? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mayor, may I just ask a clarifying question?
Please.
So in Section 2, under term, we're changing that from June 15th to June 16th. Is that correct?
Is it?
And then also in Section 4, will we adjust that date of June 15th of every year to June 16th of every year to be consistent?
I would recommend just leaving that at the 15th.
Okay, okay.
As a start date, the 15th, let it start, let it begin on Sunday.
Well, no, no. Make the start date the 16th, but then have the review date be the 15th. We're going to forget three or four years from now that we agreed to change that. It'll be better if it's the middle of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. You please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. Welcome aboard, Clay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item 18. We're moving on to item 18, which is now other items. This is for additional purposes only, and it's an update by Mr. Craps's initiative on the additional time for the women's club. Mr. Don Rosenthal.
The, the only update we have is that Mr. Craps said he's gonna need some additional time. He's trying to get some funding together to actually help resolve the issue.
I don't have any public comment on this item. Council comments? Sound good to everybody? All right, Mr. Rosenthal, please proceed with that. Item number 19, Lake Shore Hospital Authority, possible update from city manager or city attorney. Either of you?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we have no update. We submitted to Lake Shore Hospital Authority our offer to allow the hospital to move forward and operate in the city. We have not gotten a response to that yet.
Thank you. And both boards have met since? Both, and let me clarify that question, both the Meridian Board and Lake Shore Board have met since then?
Uh, the, yes, both have met since. The hospital authority met first in sequence and deferred any action until after the Meridian Board met. The Meridian Board has now met. We understand their meetings are not public, so we're not sure what happened there. And we anticipate the next public update coming at the Meridian meeting. I'm, I'm not, sorry, not the Meridian, the Lake Shore meeting later this month.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We're now, we've already done item number 20 as a quasi-judicial hearing, so we are now on item number 21, which is the city council ordinance number 2025-2312 on first reading. As an ordinance, Mr. Martin, will you please read this by title?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you ordinance number 2025-2312, an ordinance pertaining to buildings, building regulations, contracting, permitting, licensure, and insurance within the city of Lake City, repealing existing provisions of city code, establishing certain uniform codes, establishing permitting fees and requirements, establishing insurance requirements, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this ordinance on first reading, an appropriate motion would be to adopt, adopt said ordinance as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have any public comment signed up for item number 21, so we'll move on to council comments. Actually, you know what? We have a presentation here. Sorry, Mr. Thomason.
I'm sorry. Can we take a break?
Oh, we're gonna take another three-minute recess. I apologize. All right. Sorry about that.[742.91]
...technology fee. The proposed fee schedule is based on department costs and covering of those costs. The proposed fee schedule provides a more accurate approach to costs associated with new building construction. And the amended chapter one of the Florida Building Code allows staff the ability to better, provide better enforcement while enhancing customer service. Construction fees. New, new construction alterations and additions make up a large portion of the plan review and inspection services. Due to the varied complexity of these project, permit fees are best calculated based on the project's valuation. Currently, we're doing it by square foot. In order to determine the full cost associated with processing, reviewing, inspecting, and issuing construction-based permits, the formula specified by the International Code Council, also known as the ICC, for determining a permit fee is best, is being utilized to determine the appropriate permit fee and simplified fees for the customers. This is a much more accurate and fair method of establishing, establishing permit fees. An example, if we look at two new commercial buildings that are each 15,000 square feet, a metal warehouse has a value of about $82.02 per square foot, where, which gives you a building valuation of $1,230,000. Has minimal plan review in between three and seven inspections. A nursing home has a value of $302.75 per square foot. Gives you a value of over 400, 4, 4,450,000. This type of structure has intensive plan review and has up to 60 inspections. The current method doesn't account for the complexity of each building, and it costs the city more on intensive projects that are more common in our area, while it does penalize the smaller projects. Flat rate fees, all our counter permits are going to be flat rate. Customers are going to know exactly what it costs beforehand. They've all been calculated to reflect the true cost of going out for inspections and administrative costs, plan review, and everything else. This is going to allow for faster transactions for our customers and improve customer service. The amended building code, Florida Building Code, the FBC, is based on the International Building Code and is updated every three years. The FBC removes, which is the Florida Building Commission, removes or reserves much of the International Building Code, Chapter One. What they do is they allow the jurisdictions to fine tune Chapter One. This should have been done at the very last time that the building code was updated, but it was never done. Over 50 Florida jurisdictions have taken advantage of this. All of the jurisdictions adopt a model that's based on the Building Officials Association of Florida model. The proposed amended Chapter One is also based on the BOF model with a few tweaks. Requested action is approval of the ordinance, and we'll take any questions. I know you've read all 104 pages of the ordinance, so you don't have any questions?
Excessive. We will, let us open up public comment first, and then we will come back for council questions. So, the only person I have signed up for this one is you, Mr. Todd Sampson.
Yes, thank you. I have a concern mostly with the residential portion of this. I think the commercial portion makes a lot more sense now than it did previously. It was horrible, and I thank you for that work. That's much better. Residential, let's just start with a quick one. Garage door, you're going to pay 1,200 bucks for a garage door to get it installed. Why am I paying 10% of that cost to the city for the option to do so? That makes no sense. The state of Florida allows, under their code, an exemption to be done from construction guidelines on small repairs and maintenance work exempt from fees. Our county, under $6,000, you don't have to have a permit. If you replace windows, doors, tear down the house, no permit. You can file a permit, and then they'll get back to you and say, hey, the dollar amounts underneath, there's no permit. Why are we putting businesses in the city at a disadvantage? I can tell you, I personally made a decision on some items to move them into the county and not do them in the city, and just leave that lot blank, because why pay extra fees you don't have to? Why repair windows on a house that needs windows repaired when I'm going to have to pay a permit on top of that, where in the county I replaced one window, I don't need a permit? So, I think it's really hurtful to homeowners. If y'all want, I know, I see the newspaper here, if you call Tony Britt up and ask him about his experience trying to get a door permit and a window permit, it was horrible. It took him six months. This is before your time. It's not like that now. Permit process is pretty smooth now. It's just overly, it's, it's too high of a cost. Look at some of the other things that you have here. I mean, you're looking at the actual cost of the permit here in the ordinance, and for a water heater, 89 bucks? That's 20% of the cost of the water heater. Why are you paying, a water heater's 400 bucks. Why am I going to pay almost 100 bucks to put it in? I could take that 89 bucks and buy a five-year warranty on it so it could be repaired next time. I think residential should be totally exempted on repairs and maintenance, and I think any purchase or any repair under 6,000 should be exempted just like the county does. And I think, I wish Joel was still here, because it's either, you'll have to make sure the number is either four, it's between 4,500, they just stopped it though, I think it's 6,000 now. But, but verify that, because it was 4,500 about six, eight months ago. But my concern is, we're making it harder for homeowners to improve their property. I'll give you an example, a window. Do you know what the Florida Building Code is to install a window? Follow the manufactured instruction from the paperwork. Is that not correct?
Not exactly.
That's what you told me. Okay, so I did it by the instructions on the paperwork, which calls for two screws, two screws, two screws, and that's what you do. So, I must have misunderstood that conversation, but I think it's important to note that it's not necessary for some of these permits on residential. I mean, it's nice that the city has fee-based income to make, but why they have to make it on homeowners and people that are taking up place? Y'all want to know why it's so expensive to live here, some of that's the reason. You want to know why you drive by, you see stuff not being improved, that's the reason.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. And Mr. Thomason. We will close public comment, and now we will go to council comment and questions. Mr. Jernigan, we'll start with you.
I got one question for you, sir. So you, for example, if I was building a house or putting in a door, hot water heater or whatever, the customer knows exactly how much it's going to be before he gets that permit? I, I thought I heard you say that the customer knows exactly what he or she has to pay before we get the permit.
Yes, sir. Most repairs and common, what we call counter permits, roofs, window change outs, door change outs, which are all required, we have to, we have to obtain the paperwork. They have to have product approval, so that's why we require permits for windows and doors change outs, because they are required to have Florida product approval. They also have to ma, meet the energy code requirements. So, we require those because we're required to by the Florida Building Code. I can't speak for my county counterparts, but they know exactly what they are up front. We have a schedule, a menu, and everything is calculated in. So, when it says 89 dollars, that is everything, and that is the fees for us to take the paperwork in, for the inspector to go out. It includes the, also, the 89 of those also includes the fees that we have to pay to the state.
Okay.
So, if I put a hot water heater in my house, I have to get a permit to-
Yes, ma'am.
-a hot water heater in my own home?
Yes, ma'am. Couple things. Water and electric don't mix, so it's good to get a good professional set of eyes to look at it and make sure everything's wired correctly, make sure everything's piped correctly. I don't know if you've ever heard of water heaters exploding. That is because, because the relief valve is piped in incorrectly. So, we go out there to make sure, a water heater is definitely, if it's not installed correctly, it can be a life safety issue.
Ms. Young?
I do understand the water heater, because of it being electrical. I do understand that, but the windows, replacement windows and doors?
Yes, again, those are required to have Florida product approval, meeting certain wind load requirements. It's a structural element of the home, and they also have to meet the energy code requirements. The only way we can make sure that's being done is if we require permitting. That's not a new permit, by the way, that's one we've always had. We're just changing the fee, so it's a simple fee.
How did you come to the calculation of the fee?
I can tell you historically, other jurisdictions that I've worked, the average cost per inspection is about 83 dollars and change. Because our accounts are kept a little bit different here, we don't have the building department broken separate from planning and zoning and codes. I can't, I couldn't determine exactly the cost to go out, but for the five other places I've worked, I can tell you it's, it's pretty consistent, roughly between 80, 85 dollars per inspection is the cost to go out.
I'm just looking at the senior citizen?
Yeah.
Person who struggles to get the door, go to Lowe's, purchase the door, nothing under, I'll even go as far as to say 300 dollars, and then pay for the labor, and to know that they have to pay a permit fee of 89 dollars or more.
If I may, one of the things that the inspector does is make sure that whatever you have installed is installed properly. Like in the instance with the hot water tank, a hot water tank installed improperly can blow up and kill somebody. I've heard of instances of a hot water tank going up through a floor from a basement. And as far as the door, if you're going to spend 300 dollars on that door, you want to make sure it's properly installed, and you don't get any seeps around the door in the wintertime, where you don't have much of a winter here in Florida, but up, up north is a lot more important. So, there's a reason for that, for the guy can come out and take a look at it and make sure it's installed properly. Or you got a 300 dollar door that's not properly installed.
I get that, and, and yes, we want it properly installed, but let the, the large contractor, let them pay for it, and keep it low on our residents. On the residential, that is tough, it, it really is, and I'm, I'm thinking, and even myself, I had a window to blow out, I have to replace the window this week, and I'm thinking, you go purchase the window, pay the labor, and, and pay the permit fee. So then I remove myself, and I think about the senior citizen, who's barely making ends meet, to attach that fee to what has, already has to be paid, that hurts.
Counselwoman, if I may, the fees that we're proposing are actually lower than what was there on a lot of items. The windows, per se, had multiple tiers based on the number of windows, and it would go, the cost would go up. Ours is the flat rate, so if you do one window or you do 20 windows, it's the same price.
Have we ever had an exemption level in place? I know that at the county, at the county they do. I thought it was actually 5,500, but I, I think that-
I know it was 4,000, the county's was 4,000 for the longest time. I have not heard that it's changed. I know that because, you know, as a contractor, general contractor, plumbing contractor, air conditioning contractor, I've done work in the past in the county, so I know it was that. We do have one exemption that we have put into the amended chapter building, uh, chapter one, and that is for accessory structures under 250 square feet. So that will help-
But-
Provide some relief, because we have a lot of smaller structures coming in.
For ADs, the, now, but have we ever had an exemption structure in place within the city?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Thomason?
Actually, Ms. Harris, this has been waiting, sorry, Ms. Harris, we'll come back to you.
I almost feel like you're getting punished for being a homeowner. You work your whole life to become a homeowner, and it's yours. You, you already have to pay taxes for the rest of your life in order for it to still be yours, and now if I want to have an upgrade to the, my own stuff, I have to pay you guys to come inspect it?
Well, you're already paying us, and the, I mean, we're already, we already have the fees.
Beautiful, you said that we're, you're already getting paid to inspect, so why am I paying you extra money?
If I may-
Hold on, Mr. Rosenthal. Finish your thought, and then we'll come to you.
We already have fees in place. These aren't new fees. What we're doing is streamlining the fees, and we're updating them so they're fairer for everybody. If you look at the difference between the, the rates for new commercial and new residential, the commercial is relatively higher than the residential. We kept the residential rate to mirror what we currently have. The residential, rental, uh, the commercial rate's going to go up a little bit higher. We want, we want the burden to be a little more on commercial than everybody else, but we have to cover the cost. If we don't cover the cost to do business, to have the department, then it comes out of general fund, and that's not fair for everybody else.
Mr. Rosenthal, you had a thought on this?
Yes, a couple things. Number one, I wanted the council to realize that on the residential, some of the fees is actually lowered, and he mentioned in the example of the window, whether you buy, whether you put in one window or 20 windows. So, the purpose of that fee is just for us to look at that window, make sure it's properly installed. Wouldn't it be a shame if you bought 20 windows and they were improperly installed, and it didn't do what you wanted them to do? Now, you wasted that money, and the guy you got to install the windows, you think he's going to come back and fix that? He's not. But my inspector will make sure that it's done right to begin with.
But if I'm barely making, if I'm barely making it already in life, and I have to get one window, and I have to get that window done, I'm paying, it, it, it almost sounds like we're nickel and diamond people that own properties.
Well, I, I guess it boils down to how much you value your personal safety, how much you value something being properly installed.
I will, I'm responsible for keeping my, my property up, but why is it, has it turned into where's the city have to get anything if I decide to get the door done? I have to pay the city to come check that door?
Well, only if you want, if, if you want it properly installed, let me give you an example. Suppose you bought a thousand dollar door. You bought a custom-made thousand dollar door. You don't get a permit, you just go there and you install it. And then, um, six months later, the door falls down and, and hurts somebody, or it just falls down and hits the ground. Now, what do you got to do?
That is my responsibility.
Exactly.
It has nothing to do with the city. That is my responsibility.
Well, not, no, not, not exactly, because if it falls down and hits somebody else, then that's a, that's liability, and we can prevent that with a simple inspection.
Responsibility.
But we can prevent that with a simple inspection.
But that is my responsibility.
Ms. Harris, if I may, several things with windows and doors. If people don't obtain permits, and it's by a licensed contractor that is, or if you're a homeowner, you can do it yourself, if they don't obtain permits and they're storm damaged, many times the insurance companies will deny the claim. Also, if you hire someone that's unlicensed, they put windows, doors, or roof or anything else on, and, and they do a, a really bad job, I can tell you that contracts with unlicensed contractors are not enforceable in the state of Florida. So, it's very important, that's why we've required a permit. We want to make sure the people are licensed, they're properly vetted, they have insurance, they have liability insurance. That's part of our job, not just to come out and say, hey, your door is in. We want to make sure that the people that our citizens are hiring have the right insurance, they have workman's comp, they have liability, so if they mess something up, they, they're covered. If electrician comes in and wires something, your house burns down, they have liability insurance to pay for your new house.
I understand totally what you're saying, but at the end of the day, that is still my stuff.
Mayor, if I may?
If, 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 if something happens on my property, and that individual wants to sue me, I just have to bear the burden of that. But for the city to say, I'm going to make sure you're doing it right on your stuff, it's almost like you're, like I said, you're nickel and diamond homeowners.
Well, we, we're required by the state.
The county is making it. Without doing that, why are we, it's almost making it harder to live in the city.
Mr. Rosenthal?
So, I, I would just like to point out that, that whether or not something is installed properly, impacts our ISO rating. That involves our fire department. It impacts, if you, if you have something that's put in, it's put in improperly, you don't have a permit for it, your insurance is not going to pay you. If your roof has been put on, has had been put on by a licensed person, your insurance company's not going to pay you. So, that improves the city's ISO rating and working and harming it with the fire department, that, and that eventually will lower our insurance rates, if all our things that we have installed are properly installed. Everything what one person does in town really affects the other, because that affects our entire ISO rating.
I've only been in this world for 56 years, and I have never heard insurance rates actually going down. Every time I turn around, they're easing up, they're going up, so when you, I feel like we're reaching now to, to, to say this is why we have to have everybody pay for this, that, and the other. It's like we're reaching.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Carter?
Ms. Harris, insurance rates do differ from place to place, and for different reasons, environmental and otherwise. Your house is not on an island, it's next to other houses. We're in the hurricane capital of the United States, if I'm not mistaken. We just had 98% of the county's power knocked out just a few months ago. If your door's not properly installed, it's not just if it falls over, you have to pay for it. What if it flies through the window of the house across the street? Because I'm seeing plenty of times of two-by-fours stuck through cars, windows, houses, power poles. A, a lot of this argument is, to me, it feels like it's like a deeper philosophical argument on what the government should or shouldn't do, and I get that, but we have a growth management department, we have zoning, and we have them for a reason. And Florida has very specific, and sometimes a bit aggressive, codes because of the level of storms that come our way, and the things that, things that storms can do to the things from one house to the other. None of us live on an island. If your, if your, uh, water heater explodes, it might not just burn down your house, it might down, burn down your neighborhood. So, for those reasons, all this makes perfect sense. The things, the things, the things need to be inspected, and again, again, it's not just a theoretical or, or anecdotal, you and your neighbor and your thing hit them. It is that times 12,000 people in the city. There, one of these, these reasons, these, these rules exist to, to mitigate the level of litigious activity in this regard, and for that reason, I support this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Ms. Young?
Okay. Would a homeowner be able to pull their own permit on this?
Yes.
Would, um... Is there, uh, is there a, um, an ability that if someone has, um, income restrictions that they can include an application for fees to be waived?
That's, that's a tough question. There is a provision in there for, for veterans to receive a discount. Florida statutes allows us or makes us set, set fees. Florida statute does not allow us to waive fees for entities. If that's something that the council would like, we can probably put something in for that, but we'd have to make sure we are following along with the Florida statutes.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Young?
That's what I was going to ask, is, can we waive fees for senior citizens, permitting fees?
It would be, is it possible? Would that be an undue exclusion, Mr. Martin, legally?
I could look into it, but I believe if, if the city laid out a, a public purpose in doing so, and, and that would be easy to do, that you could waive fees for senior citizens or certain senior citizens of certain income levels. That, that's an economic question, of course, you couldn't waive the inspection itself, but, but you could waive the fee for the inspection to be done.
I get the inspection, I agree with the inspection.
If, if-
It's, it's the cost.
For me, for me, my thought is, is that if there was a threshold for interior changes, maybe not windows or doors, but small changes for a homeowner to make within their home, not to have to go and grab these fees, grab the, the, spend the fees for, on the permits, but, um, yeah, I, I agree with the inspections also, it's just-
So, Mayor, what I'm, if, what I'm hearing is that we come back with a, with a threshold, maybe a thousand dollars, then pursue citizens?
I would exclude certain items, you know, we've mentioned hot water heaters, those come in under a thousand dollars, but you definitely don't want to have those with amateur installation, or any electrical, I would say anything electrical, honestly, but, um, yeah.
So, anything other than hot water heaters or electrical, uh, under a thousand dollars?
I don't think that you can do any electrical work anyways, but, yes, sir, Mr. D.
I just want to make sure we remember we deal with natural gas as well.
Yes.
So, make sure that we include that, if that is something I want.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't know, is it, what do you think on that, Mr. Thomason? Do you think that's feasible?
I think that we're opening the door to abuse. I think you'll have a lot of people saying that this only cost me 999 dollars. A lot of people, homeowners, when they come in, they want to do owner builder, they give us the cost of the actual products, but they don't calculate their time into it. We already see that, and we have to figure out, you know, just because the materials cost you 900 dollars, you still have, you know, 20 hours worth of time doing the work. Florida statutes requires that to be calculated in as well. I, I don't have a problem with that, I don't believe it follows the, the Florida statutes. I do think maybe an alternate way to address some of it is to set fees or funds aside to help pay the fees, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I don't know how we can exclude things legally. I know the county does it. How they do it, I don't know, I don't recommend it, I think it opens the door to abuse, and I think it opens the door to leaving the city in some sort of liability.
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor Young?
Okay, I, I just don't like to hear it opened the door to abuse. Abuse is all over, and we have no control over that. Sometimes the good go down with the bad. We, we can't do that, we can't put that label there like that. I would definitely exclude, if there's an exemption, I would definitely excuse, exclude water heaters. That would not be a part of it, but I just hope we can, um, if we can't do a cost exemption, at least do the senior citizen example. Now, I hear we're doing veterans, did I hear veterans?
I believe that was, that was in the previous fees that were adopted in January, and we carried that over.
Okay, if we can please do senior citizens, that would help.
Okay. We'll, we'll come back with a, with a threshold for senior citizens, but we, we will still require permits for gas, electric, and, and things like that.
Councilman Carter, do you have anything before we conclude?
Just one last question. Mr. Thomason, how long roughly have you, have you worked in, in growth management?
I've worked here since November.
In general?
For ten years. I've been a building official and director of growth management in High Springs, I started in 2015.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say to everybody, I don't think, um, I, I think it is completely appropriate for us to write our rules based on the idea of trying to make them not something that can be abused. I don't, I don't, I don't understand the, the argument against that. So, for me personally, I'm not excited or interested in the idea of the exception li, limit, but if we wanted to choose either some sort of income-based or some sort of age requirement that, that exempts someone like a 65 and older or something like that, that's something that I would find-
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Young, Vice Mayor Young?
Sorry.
I, I don't know what, I said what I said about the abuse, and I meant that we cannot put everybody in the same pot. There's going to be people who are going to take advantage, they are, but everybody can't suffer because of that. That's my point, I said what I said.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Harris, did you have something else?
Mr. Carter used the terminology about abuse. Nobody likes to be abused, and, and nothing I know of. So, we're not advocating for us to say, hey, yeah, abuse us, we're the city. If truth been, be told, the city has been abused, a lot of stuff across the board has been abused, that the city has put out on people, so let's not go there. But when it comes to our constituents having to pay a certain fee, I think that we should think about not only the ones that can easily pay a fee, but we also need to think about the ones that cannot, that's barely making it. And the way inflation is and other things, the cost of other stuff that is going up, we have to consider those people, because we still want them to pay their taxes, we, we need that money, but we don't need to keep putting burdens on them by raising taxes and putting fees and all of this other stuff on them. We're going to have to come up with some other type of plan.
Sure.
So, just to be clear, don't nobody want to be abused at all, nobody.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. All right, so consensus, let's come back with the exemptions. We're, we're tabling this, I, I think till, till the next meeting.
Yes, we'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason. All right, now we're on to item number 22, which would be City Council Resolution Number 2025-068, task assignment for updating St. Margaret's report. This doesn't need to be read by title, so- This doesn't need to be read by title, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as we discussed, it's up to the council, but resolutions do not have to have their entire title read prior to a vote. Uh, the council, if it wishes, can just proceed with a motion to approve the resolution by, uh, by number and, and move on. Of course, subject to public comment and council comments.
We don't have any public comment on this item tonight, so do we have any council comment or questions?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Eight.
Second it.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion by council? Hearing none, I will ask you to call the roll, Ms. Sykes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. Now, moving on to item number twenty-three, City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Nine. This is the North Florida HIDA collaboration that our, our city police engage in. Do you have anything that you'd like to present, Mr. Chief? Chief Butler? Mr. Chief Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I know on the packet that I gave to the council, there's a lot of redactions. The reason is a lot of this is sensitive. Uh, it was originally drawn up for sheriffs who don't go in front of any boards. Uh, there's names, departments, basically what it is. Lake City Police Department with Clumby County Sheriff's Office. We're part of the HIDA initiative, which is our high intensity drug task force. A lot of the drug dealers and the people that we deal with in the county know all of our detectives, know all the sheriff's detectives. This allows us to go to other HIDA task forces. I'm not gonna say what area, but in the general area, to bring in individuals and detectives that aren't known to the local drug dealers so that we can use undercover and other operations so they don't identify them as police officers.
This also allows our police officers to?
We cooperate with them also.
Right.
And then there's also part, uh, they have, uh, databases and everything, so we'll share all the information with a much bigger area, just not our local HIDA.
Great. Uh, we don't have any public comment on this, so I will open it up to council comments and questions. Ms. Harris, you have a question?
The officers that you bring in, I know you're big on having the, um, the cameras on. Would they have cameras?
The detectives, they don't wear body cameras. I'll, I'll, I'll say that. I don't wanna get into surveillance techniques. But, uh, uniformed officers all wear cameras. The, there's other surveillance techniques we use with our drug officers.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments for Chief? Thank you. Um, would anybody like to make a resolution to adopt?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Now, we're on to number twenty-four, City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-One. This is a resolution to, um, approve the job position and description for a legal administrative assistant. We do have public comment on this, so I will go ahead and open that up now. Mr. Todd Sampson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, I notice here that the, um, amount shown in the financial impact on this agenda item is salary and benefits of eighty-three, three-sixty-eight. And I believe that's supposed to include both the, the salary and all benefits, including any medical, any expenses. Is that be correct?
Ms., Ms. Taylor.
That's only including employee-only health insurance. All other benefits are included.
Okay. Including retirement through FRS?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make a question about that. Again, I think this is a position the city does not need. You've moved forward with the city attorney being an in-house employee, so I'm sure we're going to get this to pass. Um, I would think that hopefully you could spend a little less money. Eighty-three thousand seems like a hell of a lot of money for an entry-level paralegal. But of course, you've probably already got someone picked out to hire this position. I will be looking for this position to be posted so that anyone can apply. This should not, this one does not have the exemption that the attorney has allowing you to fill it without it being posted. Um, although the Florida statute allows that on the attorney, this city has never done it before. I'm very disappointed y'all did that. That was for a passed item. FRQ's way to go. Transparency, accountability, responsibility. I'm not seeing it from you guys. Just gonna let you know now. I wanna be on the record saying that, so it's very clear. I know I've told each of you mostly in person, on the phone. I'm very disappointed. I'm also disappointed in some of the conversations in addition to this taking place to solicit people to purchase items in real estate in the CRA to build housing on behalf of the city. Shouldn't happen. I wanted to mention it here cause I did, was signed up to mention the opening and you didn't call on me. If you look at my first letter, I raised my hand, you didn't call me, so I was just gonna throw that in here. Um, if the city is gonna go into the rental property business and building housing CRA, there needs to be some other talk about it before we go out making offers by real estate.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Uh, when I read your notes, I didn't see open public comment. Hmm?
Handwriting's bad.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's important to be clear. It's important to be clear. Uh, all right. So, item number twenty-four, uh, City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-One. I will now close public comment. Uh, Mr. Sampson was our only public comment, so now we will open up council comments and questions. Starting.
I'd ask Mr. Rosenthal, what he said is true about the CARC?
CRA. Well, we'll get to, let's wait for council comments on that, uh, and we'll stick to the item here. That way, we don't mix them and then we will make, I'll make a note to make sure that we get to that. Um, Ms. Young, did you have a question?
Yes, I'll ask the question. Is the salary amount, is that in concrete or is it, is it gonna be, is that the salary for the assistant?
It's a good question. Uh, Mr. Rosenthal, would you like to address that? I believe it's what, six, sixty thousand and the total compensation is eighty-three?
Yes. I think total compensation eighty-three. I think the eighty-three thousand included everything, including FRS donations, FRS, uh, funds.
That's what Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor just said. I believe, yes.
Uh, that would be up to the city manager to, um, hire whatever rate. That's just the amount that we budgeted for.
Sure. So, then the item would be, the just, so the, the resolution would be to approve, if, if we chose to go approve the position and that be the high end? Is that correct?
That's definitely be high end.
Can we get Ms. Beal?
Yeah, yeah. Come on, Ms. Beal.
Okay. So, this position, what I was given was, um, a sixty thousand dollar salary plus benefits. Um, it does not fit into our salary matrix, so that is something we would need to look at. We have a, an approved salary matrix. Um, so it would be a little less or a little more if that's the, the amount that you're wanting to get to, we would try to fit it into our salary matrix. Somewhere in there, it did say, I think it was pay grade thirteen. I'd have to look at that up. And so, when you put it in the salary matrix, there's, it's not gonna be exactly sixty thousand. It might be a little less or a little bit more depending on where that lies.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Ms. Young.
Would this, would par- um, would this be a paralegal or?
It, it would be a paralegal.
And would anybody be able to apply for this position or?
We're, we're gonna advertise for it.
Oh, all right.
We'll follow all the appropriate rules and regs on that for sure. At least, I would hope we would. Yes, Mr. Carter?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I was gonna say, just to reiterate, that I definitely wanna see this go out for bid, just like it ought to, like we, obviously, we're already on the same page with that as well.
Sounds good. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? Would anybody like to make a motion to move forward or not?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-One.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. And now, we're on to item number twenty-five, City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Two. This is for the natural gas hedging that we had a presentation on in our last meeting. Uh, we didn't have an item to vote on at that meeting, so it's on this meeting. Uh, we don't have anybody who is signed up for public comment, so we'll move straight into council comments and questions. Does anybody have any?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Brown bringing this to us. It seems like a wise move, especially with current rates.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure, um, for my questions is that this, uh, this resolution would allow them, uh, the parameters that she asked for, give her the flexibility to buy it at the best rate or at a good opportune time, since it is a market-based transaction?
Yes. So, so what it basically does, it gives us the ability, and they'll, they'll call myself and, and,
Could you?
Mr. Rosenthal, excuse me. But yeah, so the idea behind it is, is not necessarily buy the cheapest gas, but buy the gas for a longer period of time. So, we're, we were, we were approached two, three days ago, roughly in that area. We were able to purchase gas for three dollars a decotherm, where we had been purchasing gas for six dollars a decotherm. So, really cutting it in half. So, that, that, that's what we would have the ability to do with the approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown? Comments? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion in favor of this item?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve City Council Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Two.
Second.
Thank you both. Any further discussion? Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. On to item number twenty-six, City Council Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Three. Uh, this is, I'll let you read this one by title, Mr. Martin. Last one of the night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have before you Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Three. A resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain amendment to the traffic signal and maintenance agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation for maintenance of certain traffic signals in the City of Lake City, making certain findings in fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Three as read by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment on this one, so we'll move straight into council comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, move to, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Did you have a question, Ms. Harris?
No, I was going to call it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Make the motion. Somebody.
Motion that we adopt, um, Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Six-Three.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, Ms. Sykes, please call the roll.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mayor Walker?
Yes. All right. Now, we're on to, uh, comments by charter officers. We'll start with you, Ms. Rosenthal. If you could touch on the CRA item that was brought up, if you don't mind?
I'm, I'm not, which CRA?
The, um, the item, well, Ms. Harris was gonna bring, was gonna ask about the question about buying houses in the CRA.
Oh. I am not aware of trying to buy any house in the CRA.
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, sorry about that.
And I don't think, I checked with the, uh, I checked with finance. She's not, she's not aware of it either.
Okay. Do you have any other comments? Sorry, we're, do you have any other comments?
I, I do not, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify that question real quick. Sorry to skip there, but the houses, not, but the property.
Property.
Uh, I think, I think what was being referred to was the, a lady came and spoke to the city about help with her roof.
Oh, oh, okay. That, that wasn't a purchase of property. That was a lady that annexed into the city right before the storm. The storm came and it tore the roof off of her property. Uh, one of the things we were, we were trying to do is, uh, let the CRA reach out to it to cover her area, uh, so that we could help her, but we weren't able to do that because the, uh, the advisor said that that would be too far of a stretch. So, we didn't even attempt that. But that wasn't the city trying to buy anybody's property. It was trying to help a lady that was in, in distress.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, normally, I don't comment. I can't pass it up tonight. Uh, I, I wanna express my appreciation to the council and, uh, do not take lightly the confidence that you placed in me tonight. And I'm looking forward to be a, being a full-time part of this team, uh, moving forward. Uh, there are bright days ahead and I'm looking forward to being a part of, uh, the team here in Lake City as we move into those days. So, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Martin.
Welcome aboard.
Ms. Sykes?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. All right. We'll move into comments by council members and we'll begin with you, Vice Mayor Young.
Okay. I have a few. I thought about the annexation that we spoke of earlier. Now, we'll annex in the city in residential, and there's no question, in our residential areas, um, annexation, change of, um, what word I'm looking for? Zoning.
Zoning.
In our residence, in my district, if I can say, but it's not okay. We wanna look at, we wanna, in about a field, what I'm, I wanna get to, um, we, we do, we're concerned of the residents, but when it's in our city, then we look more for, on the annexation. Am I, am I making sense? We're looking, we're focusing more on the annexation. It makes sense. Do you hear what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Well, you say it.
I, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand what you're saying.
Say it.
I think the difference tonight was that we had some people that we've been working with, some partners we've been working with.
Now, you, you, you telling me the difference. I asked you to say it so they'll understand it. You say you understand it.
I don't understand it then. No, I, I thought you wanted me to explain the difference.
How you explain the difference and you don't understand it?
Wow.
Okay. Let me move to the next one. Okay. Um, I want to, um, announce that the, I mentioned that the Lake City Police Department, the event, um, that was planned for the month of June, that's been postponed until October, um, due to some circumstances that we have no control over, so. Yeah. Um, and then the other one that I have, Annie Maddox Park, um, the events held there. There has, has to, there, we have got to come to some kind of res- resolution. I understand, and I think I, I mentioned here, I made the statement, because I was under the impression that Annie Maddox Park hosted that event on Easter Sunday. I just find that, found out that that's not so. It's just a takeover event. So, um, residents are concerned. Residents are fearful. They, they, you know, so it's, it's, the liability falls on the city. If it's not Annie Maddox Park, who does the liability fall on? So, we have to come up with some type of resolution, something. We gotta put our heads together, something for these events. What can we do?
I know it'd get called up, but it sounded like it's my wheelhouse on this one. I have met with the president of the Annie Maddox Board, uh, told him that this cannot continue. I've also got with, uh, my command staff. We've put together an ops plan with, along with the sheriff and the Florida Highway Patrol. Uh, we're not gonna have a repeat, uh, so everybody's aware that park by the board states a close of sundown. I've told them I want it shut down at four o'clock. That normally is when it transitions from a family event to outsiders coming in. Uh, we are going to do traffic patterns and some other law enforcement to keep it under control. Uh, I'm not happy with the board, uh, the residents there. There's been a lot of issues. I've spoken to different members of the council. Some of them are as simple as I'm gonna be posting emergency, no parking all around the park. We're gonna shut down and control the traffic patterns in and out, so you don't have the groups driving around. But the important thing is, I want that board, and I told them to close that park at four o'clock. That'll give us time to get people out of there before, uh, the other ones start coming in.
Four o'clock? People just getting out of church. Um, I think four o'clock is early. Now, we, we, here again, there's some good to come out of these events. Everything wasn't bad. I think it, it was, it, it went on too long. If it had been, um, and if it had, if law enforcement had shut it down, so to speak, I say seven. Four o'clock is very early. It's so hot. They're not starting probably go out there until around two. So, um, here again, we, we have to look at, there's some good in it. Everything's not bad.
Well, that, well, and that's the whole thing. Ninety-nine percent of the people there were there for a good time. But there is a time when it transitions from families to, let's just say, not families. And I'm trying to find that sweet spot where we can make sure that the community has the event that they've historically had for Mother's Day, for Easter, uh, Juneteenth, I believe is something else they're planning, to get cooperation from that board, because I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what's going on with that board as far as decision-making. Um, again, I did sit down with the president, told him our concerns, told them, you know, there's liability for that park. Somebody gets hurt in that park, it's their property. Uh, and plus the law enforcement aspect that the city has to pay. You know, you're looking, this next event, because of what happened, you're looking at twenty officers on overtime. That's a lot of overtime. And that's not counting the. That's a lot of overtime, and that's not counting the Sheriff's Department or the Florida Highway Patrol.
If, if it's not the board's planned event, how can we blame the board?
It's their property.
Is it starting out as a board planned event?
Majority of them was on the city property.
There is no city pro, well, the streets.
The road, the street, that's what it was.
They loaded up in the park and then they come out. We're gonna, we weren't expecting the turnout on Easter that happened. We've never had that many people there before. We're planning on that kind of turnout again.
And we're putting in mitigation.
There's gonna be no parking so that the residents around the park don't have people parking on their lawns, don't have people urinating on their property. We've gotten access now to the city's camera system in a manner which the commanders out on the scene can access the cameras from their city phones in real time. So if something's going on, a little more situational awareness.
And I, I believe that now that they know the cameras are there, that's gonna make a difference as well. It wasn't known, the cameras were there, but I don't think they had knowledge that they actually work. So I think that that'll make a difference as well.
Help catch a shooter.
Chief, I have a question. I grew up going to Antimaddox on Sundays. And historically, it has always been, when I was coming up many years ago, the park, every Sunday was full of people, every Sunday. That was just the place to go. But police were, they were visible, where we could see them. Were the police visible?
Oh, absolutely.
When, when the foolishness started?
They were there. That's how the officer got shot. He was, he was right there in the middle of it.
From the beginning, or did you all come in?
No, no, we had, no, we had an ops plan. We had officers there. But the, the issue is now is social media. We're getting people in from Valdosta, Jacksonville, Gainesville, Tallahassee. They're saying, come to Lake City and do this. The, the residents that we're familiar with and the officers know, we didn't have problems with them by and large. A lot of the problems were the outsiders that were challenging the officers. And I'm telling you, we're still doing investigations. More arrests are gonna be made. Because we've got the videos, we got the body cams, people actively interfering with the officers trying to do their jobs, deputies also. So we're not done making arrests. But again.
Well, I have to say, everybody I talked to thought you all did a phenomenal job.
Appreciate it. You know, the officers tried and, you know, hopefully, you know, my office will be able to recover and come back to work.
Absolutely.
A lot of people.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor Young?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Young. We're now moving on to you, Mr. Jernigan.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Did we change that time to seven o'clock or did we stay in with four? Or?
There's no decision.
There's no.
No decision?
There's no decision. There was nothing we voted on.
That's a decision of the board because it's private property.
Antimaddox.
Antimaddox, however, if the situation gets out of control, I'll declare it a public nuisance and clear the park. But I'll do that under public safety, which is a completely different, I'm trying to get cooperation from the board so we could put up signage saying the park's gonna close on Mother's Day at this time, so everybody's aware of it and nobody will put it out on social media, and that way there's no surprises.
Mother's Day is not a big.
Uh, it's, it's.
It doesn't normally be that big, but chief, when you run from that side, they're gonna come to my side, so I'm gonna need you to represent.
Well, and that's one of the reasons we have the sheriff helping us because we're trying to control that area. The sheriffs will go out and take care of any hotspots where they congregate. Long Street, the areas where they go and try and hide when we're clearing out one area.
Yeah.
Circle K, Waffle House, we all know where they go. It's all the same locations.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Mr. Jernigan.
My God. Just a couple of things that I want to give a shout out to Kayla Eli and Cal, Cali or something like that. But anyway, Cali, Kayla, she, they, I guess they are doing hot water or cold water meters throughout the city of Lake City. I think they said they had several thousand that they needed to do by a certain time. And they came out and, in front of my house and, and I walked out of the door, I was like, who, who, you know, who are these people? And I saw the young lady on her knees. She was on all fours down there digging the, the dirt out of, with her hands at that. Digging the dirt out, and I said, well, what, what are y'all doing? And I told the two guys, I said, hey, that looks kind of bad to see the lady on her knees getting the dirt out. And she, she, she looked up in her glasses and said, Mr. Jernigan, this is what I want to do. I said, oh, excuse me, ma'am. And those guys were right there. They did a really, really good job, all three of them. And just to see that young lady out there doing what she was doing, that was like, that was like ideal. I've never seen nothing like that in my life, in my whole life, and I'm a lot older than most people. That's unbelievable. And the other thing I want to suggest and recommend, these long meetings that we're having, I don't, I don't know if, you know, if, some of us realize, some of the staff, they're working 12, 14, 16 hours a day. Okay, I totally understand that, especially when you career service, I guess you could, you could say that, or you're exempt. I just want to recommend or suggest that the department heads that attend these meetings, like the meetings here, maybe they can come in at 1:00 PM because these meetings are going to like midnight, almost seem like to me in my mind. If it's any way possible that we could do that, I think that would, we would get a lot more out of those people. And then they can get some things done around the house that they may need to get done as well. So those department heads will come in like at one, not you, Mr. Rosenthal. They'll come in at 1:00 PM, right after lunch, and go from there. And then they'll have a staff assistant maybe to fill their role in until they get there, but they will be coming in about one. And that's, that's just my observation, and I know this, this has got to be hard on Audrey, the Angie. You know, look, look at these department heads over here. Look at them.
And me.
This, this is very, very hard. So that's just a suggestion or recommendation. That's what you call looking out for your, your department head. Yes, yes, they do get, what do you call that, comp time for it, four hours, five hours or whatever. I don't know what they get.
I wanna get status.
Hey, this whole, this whole thing sounds like a Steve Brown lobby.
But, but, but anyway, do what you can, do what you can to, to help them out as much as you can. So that's my, my take on it. That's my story and I'm sticking to it, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. Thank you, Mr. Jernigan.
That sound like a Bible thing to me.
Mr. Carter, you're up next.
All right. First of all, now I think you did pay him. I don't know. I've got just a couple of quick things. First thing, guys, for, for the last 16 years, I've been a member of Kiwanis Club of Lake City. We are a local civic organization. We raise money and we help feed and clothe children in our community. It's an incredibly rewarding endeavor and I very much enjoy it. This past Saturday, we have, we held our 10th Annual Kiwanis Kids' Day at the, the Lake City Rodeo Arena. It was the biggest we've ever had by far. We haven't gotten the total tally added up yet, but we've, we raised at or around $20,000 to, to help, like I said, feed and clothe kids in our area. And it was, it was a tremendous, tremendous success, so I just want to first thank all my fellow Kiwanis for helping put it on and then especially thank the community for coming out every year and making it the success it is. And, and each year we see that grow more and more, people spreading the word. So that's terrific. And then I had another question, more city-specific oriented. We have been asked to do a special call joint city-county meeting at the Columbia County Auditorium. And it was suggested that it would be a discussion, possible action. If I'm, if I understand correctly, Mr. Mayor, you called the meeting?
I did.
What for? And also, does it need to be possible action because it feels like it might need to be workshop?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. What, I, I actually don't think that it needs to be a public meeting at all. What I believe is that there, the two entities, and I think it's Richardson Community Center and Antimaddox are looking for clarity on budgetary contribution and some other partnership from the city and the county. I believe at this point, before anything comes back to this board or goes to the county or to a joint meeting, I think that it'd be far more productive for the heads of those organizations to meet with administration. Maybe the administrations have a joint meeting with the administrations of those boards, but at this point, I'm not in favor of having that meeting. And so I was going to withdraw it as a mayor-called special meeting.
Appreciate it.
Does that make sense, everybody?
May I ask, I mean, the meeting is necessary. Very much necessary.
Well, it's necessary, but what I'm saying is, and I believe it's a budgetary request, right?
Not all budgetary, but some.
Well, so instead of, instead of us going with an unplanned, unprepared set of actions to take, I would rather that meeting be had preliminarily with the administrations, the county manager, the city manager jointly, maybe if you, if you want, or if they want board participation, me as the chair and the chair of the, the, I think that it could be done administratively, but if they want representation, either somebody from the council, and I would do it as chair if you guys wanted me to, or if somebody felt so led to, to jump in, and the chair or the same scenario from the county. Does that make sense? But to have the full boards, it would be a public meeting where we would invite a lot of public response. It would look a lot like the Richardson Community Center meeting a couple of years ago that went a little sideways. It was very productive, but I think that you can have that productive part without having, without, without the asking of politicians across the board to make promises they probably can't keep, which will only put them in bad positions.
What you're saying is already in plan, that administration meet, the county attorney, city manager.
I was unaware of that.
Yes.
So then, so then I'm going to withdraw as the mayor-called meeting if, if this board thinks that the meeting should still happen? It can happen by a three-two vote, but I'm going to withdraw the, the mayor calling of the special meeting. Because I think that that is the meeting that needs to happen.
That is gonna happen.
Sure.
As a matter of fact, the attorney is supposed to call out, call. Because I don't even know how, don't worry about it, because I'm really the one that, who sat in on a conference call and really came to, in agreement to have the meeting. It's very much necessary with Richardson. And I didn't ask for Antimaddox, but I mean, it's not a bad idea.
I would just think it seems to me like perhaps a representative of this council, it's in District 10, so I would say, Ms. Young, you make a lot of sense for that. And the county representative, I think that is Mr. Parnell, meet, meet with the board and have that meeting where you determine what some of the things we want to have as a bullet point in a further meeting. That seems to make sense first preliminarily before bringing it back. And then, and then we can bring it here, we can do a joint, but once we have like, basically, for me, and the reason I ask is because special call meeting, discussion, possible action, Richardson Community Center, Antimaddox Park, doesn't even sound like a meeting. Action what? Discussion what? So if we can get some action items and discussion items first brought to us, that just makes a lot more sense to me. Otherwise, we might just have ourselves one of those real long meetings where everybody just talks in circles.
I don't think so. That's the reason, y'all not hearing me. That's the reason the, the administration meeting will take place before this called meeting. Just what y'all saying, it's, it's gonna happen.
I, I don't think that the, so in my conversations with, with county commission representation, they believe there's going to be a budget request and they are not willing to have the joint meeting or they're not wanting to have the joint meeting based on that, because they have a process for budgetary requests to come before the board, which I believe we do too. So, yeah, that's why, that's why I'm saying I don't think that it's necessary. I think that it would be, I would prefer it be a representation from this council and administration meeting with a representation from the commission and their administration to meet with the folks to bring it back to the council rather than having a joint meeting. I think that that makes more sense to me.
Okay, then just disregard the meeting and have Richardson come up here and ask you what they want. Because we're already vacation Bible school, they're asking, not vacation Bible school, summer camp, they're already asking, are we gonna assist with summer camp? Are we gonna assist with football? Are we gonna assist with this and it, and it need, all of it need to be brought to the table.
True.
So if we don't have the meeting, then we need to, we gonna have to answer to these funds.
So, Mr. Mayor, would it make sense then to, perhaps, Ms. Young, add a presentation to a future meeting and have, if they want to come and present to us? I'm also confused.
What is the meeting for? What is the meet up?
I don't know.
Give me the meet.
The, the.
You called.
I did call it. I called it at the behest, so during our meeting for the adren to prep, Mr. Rosenthal, we were speaking about Antimaddox and our involvement with Antimaddox and land disputes at Antimaddox, and they suggested that the county, actually, they suggested the county wanted a joint meeting, but I was misunderstanding that because they don't want a joint meeting.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So if you'd like to explain a little bit more how that came up?
Sure. I sat in on a, on a call with the councilwoman Young and Commissioner Parnell. And, and they were talking about the necessity for a joint meeting to just look at those, those two points, those two areas, both the park and the Rich, and the Richardson Center, that it was, from my understanding, a funding issue. And we didn't want to pay or address their funding twice for the same issue. So the two, the commissioner and the councilman, we thought it'd be a good idea to meet together, get that iron out ahead of our budget session. And that was, that was my understanding.
So did our meeting take place before the meeting?
I think it did, yes.
So it sounds like that it could be brought back to us as a presentation on what they're asking us for.
So am I, am I hearing that you, that is a direction for me to meet with the county administrator and then maybe a rep from this board, a rep from their board and meet with the?
That way they, the budget, if they're asking for, for budget to go forward, right? They can allocate which, which items they're gonna ask each entity for, and then it comes back before us as a yes or no. It's, it's way easier to do that than for us to go and.
And Antimaddox have any?
To me, it's, it's as if we're scared to show up and see, well, let's do it.
I know, I know that one.
Call the meeting, let's have the meeting, and whatever they want to discuss, let's discuss.
If we'd like to vote on having a meeting, it can be done by three to two, but I'm going to withdraw it being a mayor-called meeting.
Only, one last thing I'd like to add, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just as far as the topic in general. If, 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 if in the near future, the city and county determine that we need to have a workshop on how to discuss Richardson Community Center in whatever way, obviously, it's in the city, the county owns it, it serves children of the city and county. If we need to discuss some sort of plans for how we fund, don't fund what we fund, et cetera, et cetera, that seems like it makes sense. Antimaddox Park is a privately owned park. The city does not own the park. We don't own, we don't own anything to do with that park as far, as far as I'm aware. So I don't know that we need to have a meeting discussing how or how not to fund a privately owned park. If that privately owned park wants to deed itself to the city and be run just like every other park in the city, then that's a whole other discussion. But at the moment, in my opinion, we don't own that park. I don't know what, I don't know why we would be meeting about that specifically.
If we have someone to come up here and ask us to donate for their whatever, we, either we donate or we don't. So why does Antimaddox House, did it be any different if it's privately owned?
Well, it doesn't. It can come on the agenda as an item for, for budgetary change.
Antimaddox has not asked for money. Where did that come from? Antimaddox has not asked us for money.
Again, this is, the, the reason why I'm, I'm canceling my, my request for this meeting is I didn't have enough information to call it in the first place. And it sounds like there's not, there's a whole lot of confusion around this meeting.
Right here.
Yeah, right, yeah, right here and across, and, and, you know, from, from what I understand at the commission level too. I don't, there's a, there's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of confusion, confusion. It's not clear. So how about we let our administrations go, get that clarity and bring it back as an item that we can vote on yes or no?
I'm fine with that. I can do that, Mayor.
And don't ask those people, don't ask Antimaddox for their park. Please don't do that.
I'm not gonna ask them for the, I prefer not to have it.
To be clear, I'm not either. I'm just saying, we don't own the park. We don't manage the park.
Not ours. I don't want, I'm not in favor of the city taking anybody's property. Be fair.
No, absolutely not.
It's not ours. It's not ours. Mr. Carter, did you have anything else?
I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Councilwoman Harris? Councilwoman Harris.
Yes. Um, Mrs. Scott. Mr. Scott, I'm going to give you your kudos in front of everybody. I received a phone call and, um, someone said how graciously you were to them and how kind you were to them. So, that means much because, like I told Don today, we're not getting that report across the board. But when they said that about you, I thought you should know that. Somebody thought that you were gracious and, I don't want to use it, well, I'm going to use it. He's a sweet guy, so.
Sweet guy.
So, I thank you for representing the city of Lake City. Andy, no, I answered. Hang on, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, uh, my, my comments, um, also in Scott's department, Building Inspector Jeremy Giddings uh, passed his ICC Residential Mechanical Inspector test with flying colors. Kudos to him. Uh, also, Code Officer Don L. White has taken the required class, uh, with the Florida Association of Code Enforcement and he too passed with flying colors. I got to, um, observe, uh, Officer White, Code Officer White, here in the code enforcement meeting, uh, here this week. Very professional, well done. Um, I, I really enjoyed coming to that meeting. I think it was, it was a great meeting to watch our special magistrate and our, um, our employees interact for the betterment of Lake City to beautify our community. And I hope that, uh, they can convey to her, uh, the necessity of cleaning up our town uh, or, or bring to us what we need to clean up in our codes to help them do that. They did a great job though. Um, DOT Symposium last week, uh, was held in Live Oak. There's a lot of great grant opportunities here, uh, for our area in resiliency and flood mitigation that could help, uh, our neighborhoods that I think are very important and crucial for us to look into. Helping residents transition from their septic tank to sewer at no cost to them, uh, through DEP grants, what I, I think would be great both for the city and to save these taxpayers a lot of money. Um, so, I'm excited, uh, to dive into that. There was also some really great technology on, on display at that symposium. One of which, which I think will help, um, administration and, and, uh, Steve's, um, folks in, in Public Works be very efficient in road designations for, um, for paving. So, this, this technology was a mount on the windshield of trucks and it would, it would grade through AI and, um, basically the rumbling of the, the phone and, um, the visualization on what roads we have here, grade them from worst to best so that we could put them in a very structured way, uh, into a system for repaving and, and hit those that need it the most. Um, I would like to say also that it's Economic Development Week. Uh, there's a luncheon on Friday. I would encourage, um, as many of us to go as possible. Uh, and the ribbon cutting at the wastewater facility is Thursday morning? Thursday morning. So, that's a great thing that's happening this week. Um, also, would like to give kudos to Quanis. I was able to take my two and a half-year-old daughter out there to play on their sand, uh, to climb in trucks, honk the horns, all the good things. It was a lot of fun. But that's all I got. Um, it's a pleasure working with you guys on this board on every first and third Monday of the month. And I continue to look forward, I look forward to continuing improving our community. And that's all I got.